Going to give people a moment to come in as attendees and then we will start the meeting in a moment. Mr. Nixon, can you tell if we are live with WinCam yet?
There's a little bit of a delay in the signal, so bear with me and I'll check.
WinCam, we are ready to go live if you just give us a sign and we will.
So we just, we just, the audio is live on WinCam. We have the whole screen coming up Winchester School Committee. They usually wait for you to call it order and then they throw the videos with, but we are live audio on WinCam.
So WinCam, let's call this meeting to order and once I get sort of a thumbs up from you, we will work through the agenda and.
Yeah, we're live. Video is live on WinCam.
Excellent. Thank you very much, WinCam, and thank you, Mr. Nixon. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Winchester School Committee, February 2nd, 2021. I've cited, can you see the agenda? All, anyone? Excellent. I decided it might be helpful to actually put the agenda up. We are meeting remote due to the COVID-19 closure. We have a full agenda today. We have student report first, followed by public comment. We have a number of reports and discussion items, and when we get there, I will accept a motion to take them out of order because we have a number of guests coming and I'd like to be mindful of their time. So we have a COVID-19 district update, we have interim superintendent search update, capital projects update, an update from the select board on the Morocco project. We have fiscal year 22 draft budget update. We have draft revisions to the Winchester High School programs of studies and draft revisions to the McCall Middle School program of studies. We have a draft job description for operations quarter coordinator, excuse me. You have action items, the only action items we have today are to approve some minutes. We have share report superintendent report and future agenda items. And with that, let me stop sharing, stop share. And with that, we'll go directly to our student court. Evan, good morning and welcome to our meeting on this snowy, on this non-snow day, should we say. Love to hear what's up.
Morning, and I hope everyone's enjoying the snow as much as I am. So the first two updates that are unrelated to this past week are just first that the junior class is starting to have workshops with guidance talking about their post-secondary plans, whether that be college or otherwise, which is very exciting for them. And that our winter sports seasons will be ending as we approach February break and our fall two sports season will be starting when we come back from February break on the 22nd. Of course, the other update, which you all know, is that the high school went remote due to COVID yesterday and is remote again due to snow today. I figure if anyone has any questions about the student perspective on that, I'm happy to answer those as well as anything else.
Thank you, Evan. Questions or comments from the committee?
And seven offered, I'd love to hear this, what the students' perspective on that is.
I was going to ask, but I figured I'd let someone else ask, Evan.
I think the general consensus from students is regardless of why, like why there were so many cases, is that it's definitely better to be safe and I think everyone is happy to stay home and do remote learning as long as that means we can get back into school faster and we can resume our sports and clubs and stuff quicker. I think everyone I've spoken to in that, all of my classes has been very realistic about acknowledging that we knew that this might happen when we started school this year, of course, and we know that all we have to do is hunker down and be responsible for a little bit until we can get back in the building. And I know that from my experience personally, teachers and students both are sad to not be in the building and not be having sports and extra curriculars, but are also adapting very well to remote learning so far and are being positive and looking forward to going back when we can.
Thank you very much. Other questions? So I, I do have a question. So I know sports season, let's say, fall two is starting right after the vacation. This is personal. Are you doing a sport in fall two and what are people's perspective of these typically fall sports being played in the wintertime? If you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, so I will be doing indoor track, also winter track. And I think in the general consensus is actually people are really excited that we get to have these sports. It seems weird to have four seasons in a year, but for most people, they're very excited to be able to have that sport, no matter what time we can have it. I know friends of mine were talking about track and there was, I don't know if this was a school thing or if other towns were talking about it, but there was some debate about whether track would happen at all and everybody was really, really excited that it could just get pushed to fall two. So I think people are a little weirded out by starting at different times, but overall, everybody's just happy to finish this, especially in seniors. We're happy to finish out the seasons we love. And I know that I have seen underclassmen getting involved in sports much more than I thought they might in such an odd year. So I think pretty much everyone is just excited, even though the seasons are shorter.
That's a great perspective. Thank you. And as a follow-up, you mentioned that when we went remote yesterday, that activities and sports were canceled. What activities are in-person such that they might be canceled?
That, actually, so like, well, I'm an officer of our connecting commit club and we were going to be running an outdoor meeting that would be held, like weather depending, of course, anyway, so we knew that there was possibility it would get canceled. So stuff like that, not like anything official that had to be shut down, more just like events that people were having outside, maybe drives and collections that had to be rejigged of it.
Okay, thank you. That, that's helpful. I was trying, just sort of racking my brain about that. Thank you. Ms. Bollniers.
I just have really quick question since you were asking about sports. And Evan had mentioned that fall two sports start after February vacation. Do you happen to know when families would see the registration for fall two sports?
I got an email from my coach last night that they were live now. I don't know if that's for all sports or just track, but either way, I think their family ID registration should be live now or very soon.
Oh, great. Yes, track is what we were interested in.
This is great. Thank you very much. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Evan, I just, I'm not going to ask you a question you need to respond to right now. This is more of an open-ended request for you and your student leadership peers, just to be thinking about. Sometimes in our school committee meetings the past couple of months, we talk about what it might look like when we're on the backside of COVID and what are we learning today that we might want to continue in that post-COVID world? Is this challenging us to do some things differently or better, which is a good thing? So I would love to hear from you before you leave us at the end of the school year. I'd love to get some insight from the student perspective about what has actually worked well or differently in a good way that you might like to see us continue in the next two or three years. And also maybe what questions you might have for us, having gone through this as a student, because you and your peers are the reason that we're here and that we're doing this. And I think particularly as mature as you and some of your peers are, when you get up to a point where you're about to graduate, you have a really unique perspective that none of, none of us on this committee have. So you don't need to respond to that now unless you want to, but I'd love it if you could sort of start noodling on that, maybe have some conversations with your peers. We'd hate to lose that opportunity for discussion before you guys go off. Thank you.
Absolutely. I know, I can tell you right now, just that with student council, we've been having discussions very similar to that, even on a smaller scale, just about like in classroom, like what teachers' specific activities are doing that are working and what isn't. But yeah, I definitely, we've been talking about that and I would, I'm excited to talk about it more and definitely share that with you guys, especially closer to the end of the year when we have a full wrap on how this will go for the whole year.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we let Evan go back to his, his schoolwork? It's still a school day. Seeing none, well, after saying that, of course, you're welcome to stay on as long as you'd like, but thank you for the update and thank you for always being so, so, I don't know, cheerful and bringing, you know, certainly starts the meeting off right to have you come. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With that, I would like to move into public comment. Now I remind the public that public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions on matters under the jurisdiction of school committee. It's not a dialogue and school committee is under no obligation to respond to comments. We have a very full agenda and I'm going to really do my best to try to limit public comment to 20 minutes, so we have time for discussion. But more specifically, public comment is limited to three minutes per person. The briefer and more succinct you can be, the more we can allow individuals to speak. Public comment can be given by raising your digital hand in Zoom and I'll elevate you. And what I always do is I always lower all digital hands first, so that it's not somebody who got on first and gets the chance. Seeing that they're all lowered, if anybody would like to have public comment, please raise your hand at this time and we will call on you. I'm going to elevate to speak Ms. Erica Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman, if you would state your name and address for the committee?
Yes, my name's Erica Hoffman. I live at Seven Fairlane Terrace.
Thank you.
Hi, so my first grader is downstairs, not doing Zoom again because he's crying. He's, you know, he's heavily language-based and he is struggles with reading and literacy. He's going to miss, obviously, schooling today and miss education tomorrow as well because it's another Zoom day. I would like just the school committee and the Winchester Public Schools really to just publish a plan of what you're, you know, planning to do for the rest of the year. Are we going to stay in this hybrid model? What are we, what is the plan for next year to get the kids back into school full-time? Because I would like as a parent to plan for my third grader and my first grader on what our plans are for next year for school. You know, I looked at Hanover Public Schools announced last night that they're going back full-time. I think their K through one to two must be already back because it was from grades three up to grade 12. And they had basically, they said after careful evaluation and agreement with the Hanover Teachers Association, the school committee is pleased to release our plans to return to all, all students in grades three through 12 to four days of in-person instruction following the February vacation. The return will occur in three phases. And, you know, they're using, they mentioned in their plan, they published their plan on their website. They mentioned that they're using the poll testing. So I would just like something similar from our district, just so parents can plan for the rest of the year and for next year. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. I would welcome any additional public comment. Seeing none, can I have confirmation from other members of the committee that they see no additional public comment request? With that, I will close public comment and move on to the reports and discussion items. I would like to ask for indulgence from the committee to take our agenda out of order. We have the select board coming to a joint posting at 10:00 AM. We may not be quite at 10:00 AM ready, but in order to do that, I would like to do the capital projects update first and then move on to the joint posting with the select board on the Morocco project as close to possible after 10:00 as possible. And then last but not least, we have principals coming at 11:00, so I'd like to be able to have them come and take the agenda item for them as soon as possible after 11:00 so that they don't have to be here for as much, much more of the meeting. So I would accept a motion to just generally take our reports and discussion items out of order so that we can follow those general guidelines that I just laid out.
So moved.
Roll call vote, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshat?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The vote is unanimous. So with that, I would like to move directly into the capital projects update. And now I know I'm going to be turning to Mr. Nixon, but now, of course, I've got my agenda way out of order. So if you bear with me, I will get to, if anybody knows the page that is, that would be helpful.
It's sort of buried in the middle. There's, there, and there's just a cover sheet there. There's no, there's, basically the committee wants to kind of look back at our previous, previous packet, but we have a couple of memos we can do a share screen here for as well. So if folks don't have their last packet, they can follow along.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So it is page 41 in the packet. And Mr. Nixon, so indeed, last meeting, we really just ran out of time. And Mr. Nixon had prepared a memo, a capital memo for us, and I would be delighted to share that memo if that would be helpful for as you start the presentation, or if you wanted to just start free form and then I could give you sharing powers as well if you prefer.
Yeah, why don't you do that and then I can scroll through it as I go and, you know, I can jump back and forth. There's actually two documents that we will refer to, both in, I think the timing, it was good that we postponed this till today, given we've got members of the select board coming. We'll have a lot of discussion about Morocco. So let me, let me try this here. I hope you guys can see that. I will, yeah. So I'm just going to sort of scroll through this, take it in order, wish folks at home could see this a little bit. I'll try to blow this up a little bit better if it's easier to see on WinCam. That may help a little bit.
If you narrow the screen a little bit, then the image screen, it'll get bigger because you have a lot of margins on the sides.
Yeah, just pop, I think it looks, it looks better, better on WinCam now. Okay. Okay, so, so basically several things to touch base on and I, and I'm looking, my Zoom window is not showing me everybody. I'm hoping Ellen Widdamore is with us. Ellen, is she there?
I am here, Mr. Nixon.
Okay, good. So Ellen has to jump in if I miss something or misspeak. So let's start off with the Morocco. Well, we'll start with Morocco and we'll wind up ending there today. As you all know, for years, we had a capital need to replace the sink cabinets in our classrooms. They're originals of the building, so they date back to like 1966 or 67. They're steel. They, in many instances, they've rotted out and rusted out and the parts are really hard to, to replace. These are both, they're storage cabinets in the classrooms, but they also have sinks and integral bubblers. So unlike many of our schools that have water bottle fillers or bubblers in the hallways, I think Morocco only had the one bubbler. So this is really where kids would go to get water and they were in really deplorable shape. You all remember the presentation at town meeting. So we got some funding, put together a bid package. We're not able to replace all of the units at the school, but we're starting in the classrooms for our youngest learners, which happens to be where they're in the worst condition. We also made a decision to go with double sinks for both kindergarten and first grade, since these are students who will literally sing the ABC song while they wash their hands and that can take a while. So we want to be sure that they can wash their hands quickly and not interrupt instruction. So they are, they're, they're being manufactured. We have a little bit of delay for the backsplash and the integral backsplash and counter, but they're now scheduled to go in for February break. So we look forward to that and I know the teachers and the students will be really happy when they come in. We can talk in another time about whether we want to try to replace these in other classrooms as we move forward, but no doubt the worst of them, we're going to address. So happy about that. At the Parker School, as I think we all know, we gutted a staircase to put in an elevator, which is required by the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board in order for both the schools and the town to use both levels of Parkers. We have a lot of valuable space downstairs that's been off limits because the space is not vertically accessible. That's especially painful right now, given so many classrooms were totally remodeled after the flood damage a couple of years ago, so that we got some spaces that look brand new and we can't get to them until we make, until we get the elevator and lift installed. So anyway, that's, that's going on. The, the contractor is held up in installing the actual elevator and lift until we get the new three-phase power to the building. There was a grant of location hearing at the select board last week for the transformer. And I understand there's another public hearing coming that's required for the power pole. That'll come next week. Once that infrastructure is in place and EverSource brings power to the building, the contractor will get going with the elevator and lift. Engineering and Planning Department is very hopeful that this would be completed in the spring. So while some of this is being pushed out a little longer than maybe we'd originally planned, remember, we don't really need this running until September. So no real concern here in terms of schedule. Ellen, is there anything I forgot on that one?
No, just wanted to provide you with an update. In the memo that we had, that was drafted and presented at the last school committee meeting, it indicated that there was some design work that was underway regarding the stage lift. That design work has been done and I met with the foreman of, for the general contractor yesterday and they have, yesterday as well as Friday, I believe. And they've completed as much work as they can until the, until the electrical is brought in.
And also it mentions in the memo, but I just want to put in a plug. This is the same contractor we worked with for McCall Phase One Expansion, where we picked up those classrooms in the outdoor classroom. And my understanding from Town Hall is they've been really good to work with here, very understanding of some of these delays with EverSource and a good team member. So we really appreciate that.
And they've been very responsive to the fact that we are in occupied building while this has been going on and they've been exceptionally understanding and great to work with.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen. Okay, I scroll up next to the Lincoln, Lincoln Elementary School. So, and, and this is an issue that maybe fewer school committee members understand as intimately as maybe our chair, being a former Lincoln parent. Lincoln, as we know, is a historic building. It was completely restored and renovated from about 1997 to around 2000. And in that project, we also replaced all what we call, what architects like to call the flatwork around the building. So that's the sidewalks, the steps, whether it's concrete, asphalt or granite, the walk-off pads all around the building. And so just as a building needs to have a proper foundation, so too does flatwork. So even, for instance, when we, when we put in an asphalt blacktop play area at a school, we don't pour asphalt on top of the grass because that's going to settle. So anytime you're doing any kind of flatwork, it really requires some degree of scraping and excavation, some sort of hard pack. You want to basically prepare some kind of foundation to support what it is that you're about to build. The reason that this is sort of relevant to Lincoln is, I would say, maybe five years after Lincoln opened up, DPW began to observe settlement in treads and walkways and stairs. I mentioned, I'll just read this very quickly, Brian. So, so I mentioned the renovation. That included the walk-off pads, the flatwork, concrete walk. That included the walk-off pads, the flatwork, concrete walkways from the school to adjacent sidewalks with periodic concrete or granite treads connecting them. So over the past decade, there's been significant settling in this flatwork. In some instances, it no longer sheds water away from the building. It actually pitches water towards the building. We have water like standing next to the building, which is a no-no. We also have some ADA accessibility issues now. And in addition to that, some of the treads and in-walls have settled in some of the pedestrian routes from the school down to Mystic Valley Parkway and Main Street. And so what DPW has been able to determine over the past couple of years, and believe me, they were trying to fix this. So they were going in, they were putting in sealants, they were maybe grinding things down that seemed to have lifted. They've now actually been able to figure out that some of this work was installed with literally no foundation prep. It was just put right onto the ground, which you never do. There were some issues as the Lincoln project was wrapping up. Some contractors wound up suing one another, and I think some folks were in a hurry to get something in place and get off the site. So I think we have a legacy of that. Good news is, we're just talking about stuff outside the building, not in the building. So basically, folks, you, you, you can't fix this without tearing it up and redoing it. So you can imagine if steps and sidewalks and treads are moving because they're not properly supported. You got to tear it out. You got to put in the proper foundation and then you rebuild it. And that can be pretty expensive. So town meeting has twice voted some funding to address the Lincoln School needs, which we appreciate. The chair and I had some discussion with management and engineering and planning, and then capital last week about this. And the plan is to take that, some of that funding and actually do a review of the site with a landscape architect. And determine not just where there are failures, but to have a more kind of programmatic discussion with our principal. And with fire chief, talk about where kids go during fire drills, where, you know, parents are assembling in the morning for pickup and drop off. And figure out what we really need. And if there's an opportunity that we can remove something at Lincoln and simply not replace it and just put grass or landscaping there, that that might be a better alternative. So that review, we look forward to getting started in the next few weeks. I'll ask, actually, Brian, did I leave anything out of that discussion since you've been a part of it?
No, Mr. Nixon, I think you covered it aptly.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to skip the Morocco Life Extension piece because I feel like that's where this needs to end, given what comes next on the agenda. For the McCall Middle School, the main historic facade that faces Main Street, we're talking about the building that was built in 1932. The, the flashings are all original to the building of the mortar joints and so forth are original. They've been failing for some time, and we have water infiltrating the building. So town meeting, you will remember, gave us some funding to study this and come up with some schematic specs for repair. So since I sent this memo to you last week, we've received, I think, five or six proposals, which is terrific. They haven't been opened yet, but they will be soon. And we hope to have a team member on board. And Jack Lemannage, who's the chair of the Winchester Historic Commission, has graciously agreed to participate with the, the working group on this, as we try to evaluate what it is we need to do to restore that facade and hopefully have it last another 80 years. Then I move on to what we call our central office relocation program. We have RFPs, I think, I don't know if it's advertised yet, it will be soon, RFPs for a space program for central office. So we can move Dr. Evans and the team out of Parkhurst, whether that goes to the Carriage House or Lincoln. We need to develop a space program. And so the RFP makes clear that the school committee has a couple of options, and that those are the two options that we have. We look forward to getting somebody on board to do an updated analysis of the physical plant and an updated cost estimate. And in particular, able to give us maybe some recommendations of how both the timeliness of that work and the costs might compare to, to moving central office to Lynch. Hopeful that that work could be done by June, in case there's anything that comes out of that project that the, the new school committee would want to go back to capital and seek some either additional funding to study something further. Or perhaps we start a conversation about surplusing the carriage house back to the select board. Because we really should know by the end of June whether that's a viable candidate or not. And I'm watching the clock and it's almost 10:00. So I think the timing is good. We come back to the Morocco piece. The, our Morocco Life Extension Project. You all will remember, we had some funding. We brought in Flansburgh to look at the building kind of soup to nuts to figure out what kind of investments do we need to make in Morocco to sustain the building until a replacement could come on board sometime around the fall of 2028. That date simply comes from an acknowledgement that we're building a new Lynch first. And we don't expect a new Morocco any quicker than three years thereafter. So this is, the recommendations from Flansburgh were really about in, investments in the building that would sustain it for another eight to 10 years. And I'm going to, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to bring up the other memo that you shared with the committee a little earlier before our meeting, and I want to bring this up.
So in context, this is a memo that we had in our packet back in August. And I don't expect anybody to have read it, but it was part of our agenda then. So it's.
Yeah. So this is a memo that we, we discussed either end of August or in September. This is a simple summary of what that Morocco capital improvement study recommended. And the bottom line is we, there were really four priorities that came out of that report. Priority one is what town meeting just funded a few months ago and, and which we're about to move on. We, we actually did get proposals and we have selected a firm. I don't think we have the contract executed yet, but that will be moving forward very quickly. So that is to do the, the roof inspection. There is some destructive testing involved in there as well. We want to see if there's been any deterioration in the roof deck. And evaluate any damage to the insulation and from water infiltration. And we also are going to need to do some testing on the electrical system. So that's priority one, which is really to kind of better assess what it is we need with respect to power and the roof. And that is happening now, and that's funded. Priority two is really the lion's share of the cost. Priority two is, okay, we're going to get the results back late spring. And let's say by summer, the goal should be to then come up with the construction documents for a roof replacement. The full design specs for, you know, the electrical, electrical work, and then you actually go and you do it. So there is, and I, I think I broke it down. Yeah, I did, right here. So priority two scope. The roof, you know, could be anywhere from 2.3 to 2.5 million dollars. The electrical work could be 850 to 900. These are just rough estimates until we actually get the testing complete. And so that's why priority two accounts for, you know, nearly 3.5 million dollars. I want to be also just clear with the committee, there was a priority three, and I want to talk about priority four. Priority three is really much less urgent. It's recommended for a couple of years out, much more affordable, if you will. Priority four, these are what we called discretionary investments. So if we really are committed to replacing Morocco sometime between, you know, the fall of 28 and the fall of 30. We shouldn't really need to make any investments in priority four, but that would include some things like some masonry repair. There is some deterioration in the masonry wall. It's not falling apart right now. But if we want it to last more than eight or 10 years, we may need to go back and reevaluate that. So this is really kind of where the priorities came from. Now, this, this is the number that I think we'll be talking about shortly with some representatives from the select board. The committee will recall, there's been some discussion around a debt exclusion override that seeks to fund project 10, which is our last flood mitigation project. And, and I think we started, gosh, 14, 15-ish years ago, maybe even more, working sort of downstream to upstream. There is a culvert on the Morocco property adjacent to the railroad tracks. It's in an MBTA right-of-way. That's the last project is to remove and sort of rebuild that culvert. The cost for that at the capital table, we've been kicking around, is around 10 million dollars. That money does not exist in the stabilization funds. Similarly, if we don't have the money in the stabilization funds for 3.5 million dollars investment in Morocco, or let's say if we did, we'd hobble our ability to do much of anything else. You know, we could, we could bond it, but then we take on the debt service. So what's interesting is remember, if the plan to sustain Morocco is until, let's say, 28 or 30, and here we are in 2021. If we were to bond that investment in Morocco, we really can't do that for more than 10 years. Because we're, we're being sort of disingenuous, right? You're not, you, you don't want to take out a six-year car loan on a car that you're going to get rid of in a year or two. You'd, you'd be upside down pretty quickly. So the conversation at the capital table and with management has been around paying for a Morocco investment over 10 years. And so the conversation then has also been about sort of wrapping that in with the Morocco culvert project. So think about 9 to 10 million dollars for the culvert work. Maybe 3.5 to 4 million dollars for Morocco, and that becomes a debt exclusion override question. And that's what I think we're, we're going to be talking about shortly. The other thing that I just want to share with you very quickly, and I, hopefully I can even bring this up. Hopefully I can. Let's see. There we go, if everybody can see this. So here we see our chair, I think Karen's in there, Ms. Marchand is there, Ms. Shapiro from the board, and Ms. Bergstrom, Mr. McPeak from Capital. This is, I always chuckle because this looks like an episode of Antique Roadshow. It looks like Mr. Lawson found an expensive painting in the basement of Morocco. Or that this is what our custodial staff do on their breaks, fine oil painting. But in fact, this is the basement. I love how clean it is, how organized it is. This is an important image, and it really bears on the discussion we're about to have. In the back here, you see the original sexual, sectional cast iron boilers. This is very similar, actually, to what produces the heat at Lynch. Both of these are original. They go back to 1966 and 1967. These were basically shut down and mothballed around 2008, 2009. When we completely redid the heating system at Morocco. And we actually replaced these with these kind of silvery things that are about the size of a refrigerator. We have three modular gas-fired boilers at Morocco. These are extremely high-efficiency units. They were installed in a project that I think cost us around 1.2 million dollars at the time. And the goal was to substantially reduce our utility costs. And that has happened. Unfortunately, and remember, these went in about 10 or 11 years ago. By year five, we started to have some real trouble with these units. And perhaps Ms. Kirby is having some PTSD, because I think some of this happened while she was principal at Morocco. We had some days when school had to be canceled just for Morocco because we had no heat. There have, beginning at maybe year five or year six. We had, began to encounter some trouble in terms of how these units talk to one another, how they share heating responsibilities with one another. And that has been a problem that DPW has been chasing frankly for years. These are not manufactured in the United States. Support has been very poor, to be candid with you. And then in addition to that, I would say in the past couple of years, some parts have begun to wear out and burnout. Part replacement has been very difficult. So the reason that this comes up today is that DPW is, has put in a request to capital, and Mr. Vinalia was able to participate with us at that last capital meeting as well. There is a proposal to actually replace these three units. Although we had expected to get 20 years out of them, there is a proposal to consider replacing them essentially today, to wrap that in with this Morocco Life Extension Project. So that 3.5 million dollar figure that I gave you might need to be increased on the order of, I think it's around 350-ish thousand dollars to replace those units. So if we don't do that, they're going to continue to be problematic. And I, I will tell you that a third of our heating plant is actually down right now. The second boiler has been out of service for months. And so in this bitter cold, both burner boiler one and boiler three are sometimes running at, you know, one and two in the morning to keep the building comfortable for school the next day. So problem's not going to get better. It's going to get worse. And so it's a serious proposal from DPW that might increase the scope of the project. That's a mouthful. Mr. Vinalia, what, anything I left out on that Morocco piece with respect to capital?
No, I think, again, you did an excellent job. And if you are amenable, I would like to open up the, to questions from the committee on everything but the Morocco project. Just to, and then we can move on to Morocco, and then we can invite select board to the table. But I just want to know if people have questions about any of the other projects that were discussed, where they stand. Well, thank you very much. Your memo was very thorough. So while we didn't get to it last week, hopefully everybody had read it last week, and so it was up to date. But having the actual presentation is, is indeed more helpful. Moving, Ms. Bergstrom, I see you, you have a question? Oh, sorry. I saw you unmuted, so I was like.
Just thank Mr. Nixon for all his hard work on this and for keeping the committee so well informed about capital. I think that a reflection of no questions on that first part isn't so much that we're not curious about how things are going, but that he summarized it incredibly well for us. So I appreciate him keeping us up to date.
Agreed. Moving on, are there questions about Morocco? And anything he presented on Morocco before we move on from this agenda item? And invite select board in? Because I, I just want to give the committee a chance to discuss anything that Mr. Nixon just presented before. Conversation may change a little bit when we ultimately invite select board in, because it might switch from what needs to get done to how it might get funded. And I just want to make sure that we focus on what needs to get done a little bit right now. Ms. Bergstrom.
I was just going to ask Mr. Vinalia if, if it wouldn't be of value to bring the select board in now. I just don't want to ask questions twice either.
I, I, in a moment, I, I'd like to complete this agenda item only just for completeness. And then if questions are repeated, then so be it. But I, because again, the focus of that discussion might be slightly different. So I don't want to.
Thanks.
Mr. Nixon.
So I, I'm going to put Ms. Kirby on the spot a little bit and say, once you're a Morocco principal, you're always a Morocco principal. I, I would just ask if, because Lori, you, you were principal when we were sort of struggling with some of this. Do, do you have any thoughts as the former principal at Morocco about either, any information or sort of color for the school committee about the history we've had with the heating plant, or, you know, your, your, I know DPW works really hard to keep our schools running and in good shape. You know, you are very familiar with their responsiveness when there've been issues. This, this has been a challenge over time, has it not? I mean, just, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but anything from your unique perspective might be helpful for the committee and for participants watching today, because we, we made a really big investment in Morocco, thinking that this was going to last a lot longer. But it, it really just seems clear it's not going to be the case. This has been disruptive to the Morocco, Morocco community.
Ms. Kirby, you have anything there?
I don't know how much I can add, Chris, because I think you painted a very good picture of, of the reality. And, you know, that, I've been out of that building now for four years, but it was so exciting to think that millions of dollars was being spent to rectify a very, very outdated system. And it was most disappointing that it was unreliable at best. And to your point, the DPW was nothing but exceptional and reaching out and contacting. But when you have the staffing you do and the hours you do for custodians at a elementary building, you don't always get it in time and getting a hold of the right people in the moment. So you're absolutely right. There were days that we were last minute. I remember closing the door quickly and making those school messenger calls to alert families. We're not having school, or we have to leave early. And it was an inconvenience at best, disrupting of learning, number one. But two, the safety of the kids because they're sitting in a cold building because their parents, understandably so, couldn't, couldn't come back and, and, and pick them up. So it definitely is an issue. And just for the comfort of the day-to-day learning. I mean, I remember many a day as well where kids and adults are walking around in mittens and hats and gloves. And, you know, again, focusing on the learning, hmm, it's more just the basic need of being warm.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Mr. Nixon, I have a question for you. You've mentioned, oh, uh, uh, Ms. Bergstrom, I'll get to you in a moment. You mentioned that one of the units is down and two are running. Is the unit that's down currently being used for parts? What, what is, what is it being used for, if anything, right now? Because it would seem to me that if you had a part that failed on another unit, you have it sitting on the unit right there, at least 10. Because it would seem to me that if you had a part that failed on another unit, you have it sitting on the unit right there, at least temporarily.
Um, so the, you know, it's not being used and it's not being scavenged for, it's down because the combustion head has deteriorated on uh, boiler number two. We were made aware of this um, late last summer, uh, that it looked problematic and was um, trigger, triggering sort of a failure for heat. Um, and uh, again, Mr. Lawson has been really working hard to get the parts. So these are manufactured outside the United States. The support network um, near us has been uh, uh, very difficult. Uh, so difficult to get people on site, difficult to get parts. And the way these systems work is you basically have a, you, you have a one boiler. It tends to be on and running at some capacity during much of the year because you have some requirement for heat, of course. Um, at night, when nobody's in the building, even in the heating system, we have some setback control. So, you know, we don't keep Morocco at sixty-eight degrees at two in the morning, uh, purposefully. So you've got one boiler running, and then it calls for heat when it needs it. It calls for help. And then if it needs a third rower, if you will, the other boiler comes on. I, I, I will tell you, particularly with the bitter cold that we just had over this past week, this is the kind of weather where you would typically see all three boilers running at Morocco. Um, and that's not happening. So um, um, I, I do period, I'm, I, I find myself down there in the evening some nights and I, and I notice that uh, you know, we've got both running at ten and eleven o'clock at night. And that's just an indication of how hard they're working to keep the building comfortable for the next day. So, no, I, I, I don't believe there's any short-term plan that can get number two running. I feel like th- this proposal that has come from DPW is really just a reflection of uh, kind of their exasperation, um, frankly. Um, and not to get, you know, too weedy. I was, I, I was looking for this, uh, Mr. Chairman, while we were talking. DPW has put together this proposal, uh, shared it with management. It's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we're estimating for the full replacement. Um, you know, the unit cost for these is around thirty, all in around ninety. But then we're talking about, you know, you have to disconnect and remove the ones that are there. There's a lot of plu- uh, plumbing, there's valves and so forth. So that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar number includes, I, I think it's a very safe number. I think it's a conservative number that includes all of our soft costs, our engineering costs and so forth. It, it may well come in under three fifty, but um, it, it could easily be, I'm sure it would be six figures and it could very easily start with a three.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Ms. Bergstrom.
Putting my hand down. There we go.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure I got my hand down first because sometimes I forget and leave it up. Um, my first question is a quick one um, for mix, Mr. Nixon, perhaps. Um, is this, this is the full replacement of those boilers that we're looking at, Mr. Nixon? Is this, um, are we also keeping in mind um, the most energy efficient, the most environmentally friendly replacements of that as we're looking to extending the life of this building?
Yeah. So these are high-efficiency modular gas-fired boilers. It is a type of heating plant that's exactly like what's in the building right now. Um, some have made the observation that uh, we might have been kind of at the, the bleeding edge a little bit uh, when this project was first undertaken. Um, uh, you know, we, we don't have, for instance, these kinds of issues at the Vincent Owen School. Uh, but that heating plant was installed sometime around maybe, well, it would have been early twenty thirteen. So VO's heating plant is probably, you know, at least four, four and a half years, um, let's say newer. Um, so more manufacturer, more manufacturers are out there, more options are out there. Um, this is becoming a little more widespread in terms of uh, technology. But Mr. Lawson in particular is going to um, some manufacturers who are based in North America and who have a more robust support network, um, more robust warranty. So that if we should run into any trouble, we can be assured that parts are available and, and we can get literally boots on the ground out there to help troubleshoot if we have problems.
And I think you anticipated my next question is how do we avoid the problem of purchasing a new system and having issues with it again five years in? So, thank you. I'm glad you anticipated that. Um, and my next question is, is I, um, it's certainly heat is a fundamental um, uh, facility issue to have for kids having a good environment in the school. Earlier in their capital conversation, we talked about the replacement of sinks and things like that. And I'm trying to put myself in the position of a Morocco parent when I think about Morocco life extension on a building. And I'm wondering if you and Ms. Widmore um, could also perhaps address some of the more um, uh, soft additions we're making to the building. So what are the kinds of things that we are doing in the Morocco building to sort of change the experience of kids and families in the building every day? Besides the things that just extend the life of the building?
Well, I, I'll take a stab at that and then ask Ellen to jump in. I, I, I think, so remember when we identif- we go through the capital process every year and we look at the needs of all of our school buildings, not just Morocco, and we prioritize those needs. If the funding had supported it, we would be replacing all of the sink cabinets and all the classrooms at Morocco. Um, but, you know, we, we made some initial budget assu- assumptions around what that would be. These are very, very custom units. Uh, and so we didn't have sufficient funds to replace them throughout the building. The good news is we're replacing the ones that are in the worst shape. And I might argue the ones that are in the greatest need. I mean, again, so to go from single to double basins for those young learners so they can wash their hands quickly, that's important. Um, when we move throughout the rest of the building, Ms. Bergstrom, you know, those, those unit costs will go down. We don't need to provide double basins in a third, fourth, or fifth grade classroom. So, I, I would suggest uh, uh, the next thing to do in terms of just improving the experience for, for our teachers and students would be to finish that work. And then associated with that, I will point out um, that we have some instructional spaces at Morocco that have no sinks. So the two modular classrooms that were installed back in two thousand eight have no hand washing sinks in them at all. Um, and I would assume because that was part of the same project at Ambrose at the time, and Ms. Bergstrom may know, I don't believe therefore the two modulators at Ambrose have hand washing sinks. Um, we don't have a hand washing sink, you know, at the counter, um, uh, in the classroom that's adjacent to the library. You know, over time, as you all know, we've, we've, we've been sort of creative to create classrooms when and where we could, meaning four walls. Um, but we didn't always bring in the electricity and the power that we maybe would have liked, either because we didn't have the budget or we didn't have the time. So we did identify when we walked the building with Flansburgh, some areas that really should need hand washing sinks. But we didn't really pursue it with them in terms of creating any design documents because it was really clear to us immediately that the funding we'd received from town meeting would be insufficient to pull that off. So for instance, if you have no hand washing sinks at the modulators, you can, I guarantee you, there's no, there's no cold water supply hiding in the wall because there was never a sink there. So to get sinks in some of these areas is going to require um, some, some plumbing back to a distribution loop. And so that's going to increase the cost. So, these are the kinds of conversations that I'd be happy to have if, if the school committee wanted to talk about like, what else is there we can do? But I think the reason that it's not sort of recommended in the Morocco life extension project is, and you know, and I've been a Morocco parent for like fourteen, fifteen years now, and my kids have been in some of those classrooms without hand washing sinks. And they got a great education. So that, that's the conversation to have, right? Is that if, if we're, if we're bracing ourselves for a Morocco replacement, that we may have to fund on our own, as Dr. Evans has said, that may happen. If, if, if we want to replace a Morocco so quickly on the heels of Lynch, we need, may need to be really thoughtful about where and how we spend our money. Um, but I think it's a conversation worth having. Um, anyway, so I would say sinks are at the top of my list because everything else is just more about cleaning and maintenance. Um, there's a lot that's picked up in priority one, two, and three. Um, I, I wonder what Ms. Widmore thinks. She may have other ideas too.
And are there things we've already done, Ms. Widmore, too? I think there are some things we've done there, haven't, aren't there in the last few years?
So, um, to, to Mr. Nixon's point, I agree that um, the sinks for hand washing um, is extremely important. Um, this year we did add some portable um, hand wash stations um, throughout all of the schools. Um, specifically over at the elementaries, we added um, smaller um, units for um, for our little learners um, to help with the fact that there are so many um, issues with um, accessibility to hand washing over at Morocco. Over the past um, few years, we've done some improvements in terms of just um, cosmetics. Um, and I really appreciate uh, Mr. Lawson and his team's efforts um, in, in sprucing things up. And the head custodian over at Morocco um, it has done an amazing job um, with trying to, you know, keep things moving this year um, during uh, COVID. Um, we've done some um, some investments in replacing furniture, um, as well as some area rugs um, prior to COVID. Um, with uh, COVID and having to, you know, take things out of classrooms and um, put away our area rugs and our um, you know, soft, flexible furniture. Um, we'll have to see after, you know, when we start bringing kids back, um, what we are able to continue to um, to, you know, provide replacements for. Um, but those were things that I've been working with Mrs. West on um, prior to this. Um, we've had um, a great partnership with Kidsborough, um, and they use some spaces over at um, over at Morocco, uh, specifically the library area. Um, and those are areas, again, um, that we would be able to utilize some of our um, the rental revenue uh, from having a uh, Kidsborough in to do some um, replacement and some upgrades in the library area as well.
Thank you, Ms. Widmore. Mr. Nixon.
I would just add to that list. Remember, you, we can make improvements outside the building as well. So I think one of the, one of the biggest and most helpful improvements recently, and I really want to call out Ms. Verdicchio, who I know is going to join us in a moment, really appreciate her support as a, a select board member and former Morocco parent. But we put in the new Bates Road sidewalk, and we tied that into Washington Street. So now student and vast majority of our walkers come from that side of the school. So they have a, a, a more direct way to get to school. That's good. That definitely improves the drop-off pickup procedure. It limits the amount of sort of congestion at the intersection between pedestrians and vehicles. So this is fundamentally a huge safety issue. And the committee will recall some of the, the public testimony around that um, before we made that change. So, you know, Mr. Gill uh, has been very helpful at DPW and knowing that that was a priority. So I'm just, I'm really thankful we got that done. It's, it's kind of funny that that happened right before the COVID year where there's now suddenly very few cars at Morocco, uh, given that we're doing the hybrid model. Uh, I, I can't understate what a big improvement that's going to be when everybody comes back to school. It's just going to be huge.
And also, if I could also just um, piggyback on Mr. Nixon, um, with spaces outside having been improved upon, there is the covered space um, to the back of and underneath Morocco, that is an open space um, that had been used for storage. Um, that was all cleaned out um, by DPW and that now actually ha- is a place for um, for kids to have mask breaks and uh, for there to be some, you know, some outside um, learning um, and playtime for the kids as well underneath there um, that's covered from the elements. So, um, that was taken care of over the summer and the beginning of the school year. And I know that that has um, has definitely been an improvement.
Thank you, Ms. Widmore.
Thank you to both of you.
Okay, you're good. Um, any additional questions on um, uh, every topic? And if not, um, if, if, if we want to actually um, talk more about funding and, and continue on with just Morocco, I'm now at this point happy to um, move on to the next agenda item. And uh, uh, welcome the select board. So any additional questions on this and topic in general? Okay, so with that, let's move on to the next agenda item, which is um, uh, meeting with select board on the Morocco project. Um, I believe they are cross-posted, double-posted, so we need to elevate them and allow them to call to order. Um, so I will promote panelists, um, uh, members, I believe the town manager um, is here as well. Uh, oh, there, uh, Mr. Bettencourt, are you expecting additional members of your committee? Or um, do you have a recording secretary you need to have elevated?
Um, I'm not sure who's here, but
Okay.
I think we've got, uh, I, I think some of our members might, might trickle in as, as the meeting goes on. But uh, I know Amy and Susan are here and uh, Lisa, so I think that we're fine. So we can um, uh, open up the um, meeting of the Winchester uh, s- select board and joint session um, February second with uh, the school committee. And uh, thank you for for having us. Um, we appreciate it. We know it's a busy uh, a, a busy time of year for you. And the past year uh, has been uh, very busy. So we thank you for your service and um, having this discussion with us. It's an important one. Um, as you saw from the pictures that uh, that Mr. Nixon put up, we were at Morocco, many of us, about a year ago, um, to take a look at um, what the immediate needs there. I, I look at it more as a, a life support uh, project than a life extension um, project because what we're looking at are really the absolute necessary uh, repairs for the Morocco building. Um, so when uh, and the, the heating system is something that we uh, we really need to, to focus on as well, that um, is uh, it's kind of the, the known unknown at this point where um, we're uh, uh, our DPW director is, you know, constantly circling Morocco, Morocco to see if they're uh, if the boilers are running this weekend. Uh, you know, another one failed. Um, the select board did receive a memo from the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee requesting us to um, look at uh, some legal action um, with the manufacturer. Um, and the select board will be discussing that as well because it's not just that these are failing now, but they began failing for us um, pretty soon, you know, within five years of us uh, you know, with the installation. So, something's wrong. Um, you know, getting uh, parts has been really difficult. Um, you know, I think there's some concern if we start pulling parts uh, from one boiler to another. Um, you know, it's, it's, there's going to be um, issues that will might prevent us from recovery down the road if we start pulling things apart like uh, 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 li- like we've done in the past for, for uh, to keep things going uh, beyond their useful life. So, uh, but these uh, you know, we intended to be uh, there for, for much longer. Um, but uh, we can't really wait, as Ms. Kirby was saying, that there's, there's some mornings where we're crossing our fingers and there's one boiler running the building and it's uh, it's cold and it's not efficient. So, um, and uh, certainly roof repair is something that we need to do. And um, uh, happy to discuss uh, further with the committee. I think our goal um, with kind of crashing your meeting here this morning was to, for, for us to get on the same page about what needs to be um, done as part of this override. Um, I, um, I luckily don't have a full knowledge of all of the projects like Mr. Nixon does in his head because I don't know if I would sleep at night. But um, we, you know, we've got to kind of keep things on a very um, uh, uh, narrow track. Um, it's a, it's a tough time to go out for an override, but it's, it's something that we really uh, saw was necessary. And, and the culvert is a uh, is, is a big part of the future Morocco um, construction project as well. And when we look at the cost of these projects, as we know, when we look at even things like the elevator at Parkhurst, um, the longer we wait, really, the um, the cost is, is just, you know, exponentially increase, increases and um, gets away from us a little bit. So if we were to uh, fund the uh, the override for the Morocco culvert project, we still wouldn't really even be um, you know, bonding that for, for a couple of years. So those, the costs are going up as we're, as we're waiting. So um, the time is now and the more um, we, we'll, we'll get more out of the, the repairs to Morocco, the sooner that we do it. Um, and we're, you know, we're still in the middle of the Lynch project, right? So um, we uh, it's unlikely that we would be funded for a Morocco rebuild with the MSBA um, anytime in the, the near future. And um, certainly, um, I don't want to take up too much airtime here. If uh, any, any of our members, Mr. Dicchio or Mr. Shapiro or uh, anyone else here wants to, to jump in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt.
Yeah, um, thank you. Uh, I, I, it's nice to see all of you. Nice to be with all of you. Um, I think the Morocco sink project might have been the, my, I ranked that number one in my first uh, year, uh, which was, I think, two thousand thirteen. Uh, just see that's moving along. Um, I, I, you know, everything that, that Mike said, um, makes a whole lot of sense. And that our ma- our main goal is to understand what you feel Morocco school needs and how we can um, address that in the context of the, you know, overall economic situation that we find ourselves. Um, and I also want to mention that um, to me, pairing the uh, immediate work with the culvert makes sense because as Mike said, they are both critical to the future of this school, of Morocco school. The uh, the culvert project is the last, will be the last one in the whole townwide um, flood mitigation program with the whole town does not get the full benefit of that program until we do all of the projects. And um, Morocco in particular, the Morocco site would be benefited um, if we get this culvert done because a lot of it is currently in, you know, the official flood risk, the flood plain. And if we can get this culvert done, then that line will come back and more of the site will be available for building in when we get to the point where we're building a new, a new school or renovating the school. I did a little bit of checking and, um, th- this, uh, the last time Morocco experienced flooding was 2010. I think there was actually water in that underground area that, that Ellen Whitmore was talking about. And I, I wondered if, you know, maybe the work we've done, the, uh, the flood, flood mitigation projects we've done today have somehow been enough or, you know, fixed that, you know, it's, do we really need to do the culvert? And in fact, the town has not experienced the kind of rainfall, um, that it did experience in March of 2010, um, in the succeeding years. The, um, in March, 2010, I believe that rainfall was over 16 inches. And I think in no month that we exceeded 10 inches, uh, since then. So the risk is real. And I, I think that it's, it's, it's going to be difficult to get the word out in the next two months. And it's, it is not an ideal time to be asking for an override, but I think both parts of it are really important. And, um, it's, it's, I'm glad you're focusing on the, you know, the high priority, really need to do, um, projects within the building to extend the life, of the school building. Um, I think that, you know, my, my kids went there and it's, it's not getting any better, um, but they did get a great education. And it's more of the, it's, it's about the people and keeping the people comfortable so that learning can take place. Um, so I think we're on the right track. We, we do need to sort of nail down the costs so that we can get the word out and everyone, everyone will understand why this is really needed. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, oh, thank you very much. Ms. Shapiro or, or Mr. Betancourt, if either of you have anything you want to follow up with, um, on this?
No, ju- you know, just say, uh, sorry, Amy, uh, but, uh, just to say too that, you know, our, um, when we look at some of the other capital needs, um, that, you know, are kind of smaller items, those lend themselves more to be, uh, handled by the stabilization funds. As Mr. Nixon said, I mean, there's, there's no room for us to, uh, pull out, you know, in excess of $3 million in the near future, um, for, uh, of the stabilization funds. So, um, it's, uh, it, th- this is really the only path for us. And it's something that we had discussed as, uh, part of, um, our, uh, capital, um, ask in the override as well, that we would need to, uh, put some money towards both Lynch and Morocco. And in a way, I mean, we're, we're, we're still doing some work on, on Lynch, but, um, it, it's, it's nice knowing that we're, um, that we have a rebuild project going on. So, sorry, Amy.
No, it's fine. I just, I mean, you all have done, um, an immense amount of work on this. So obviously I'm just here to more listen than anything. I think just from a, from my point of view, it's a little uncomfortable to be talking about this right now, um, with kids not in school, but, um, obviously it seems like time is of the essence. So I'm just here more to learn and hear from all of you, but I just did want to put in my two cents about that from a parent's perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Um, uh, Mr. Nixon.
Just thought I'd share a photo. This is just what Ms. Verdico was describing the last time we had a major flood event and the impact this has on the site. You see the, the flooding has actually impacted this lower level. Morocco actually does have enclosed spaces. We have a couple of classrooms and offices at the lower level with stairs to get down there. Um, those were last used in the late seventies, early 1980s due to a number of flood events just like this, which did cause damage to the school. And that's why that space has been largely off limits. To Mr. Betancourt's point, uh, and Ms. Verdico's point, once, um, project 10 is complete, it allows us to, uh, re- get a, a remapping by FEMA of the flood plain. Many homes will come out of the flood plain. That obviously benefits homeowners, whose insurance costs will go down. But remember that'll be sort of the, the penultimate project, um, and should reduce the incidence of this. We have discussed many different options about where a new Morocco might go. Um, you know, one option is to build a new Morocco on this site or maybe even something adjacent on Leonard Field, but wherever and however we do it, um, having more options from a site planning point of view, is super important. And so folks can appreciate, we, we can't build a new elementary school where periodically we seem to have a lake. So this just underscores the point because I think, here's what I take from Susan's comment is it really has been a while, thankfully, since we've had a major, you know, flooding event like this. But those who were here and remember it know how devastating it was. So it just underscores the importance of project 10 and getting it done.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. So I would, um, point out to, um, the select board that typically we would rank the projects that we see as needs and, and send them on to the capital planning committee. But how they get funded is often beyond sort of something we talk about at our table. We don't, um, sit about round and say, well, it should be funded with a, uh, borrowing with, uh, debt service from the, um, building stabilization fund. So, so what we're able to do and what we are happy to do is talk about the projects that we think are essential that they get done, especially in light with this project. And if it's the opinion of the, uh, select board that the way to fund those is through an override, then you certainly, well, I can't say, I can say for myself, you certainly have support of myself as chair and, and perhaps other members of the committee that that's, um, that, that would be the way to do it. So if that's the intention, then, uh, y- you will likely get support from the committee for that. But you, it's unlikely that we're going to propose that that's the way to fund it, only because we obviously leave that in your capable hands as far as how these projects are funded. Does that make sense, Mr. Betancourt?
Uh, sure. Yeah. I mean, we're, we're looking for support. I mean, we see this as, uh, something we need to work together on over the next couple of months and certainly, um, impact, impacts the schools as much as anything else. But what else impacts the schools is, um, uh, when we put these overrides on that we're not, you know, tiring out the community with, uh, with overrides, right? We've got, um, uh, Lynch override, uh, you know, coming up soon and, uh, and, and operating override on the, the backs of that one beyond there. So it's, uh, you know, important for us to kind of talk about, uh, the sequencing, um, of, of these larger asks and to make sure that, um, the school committee's with us. Um, it's important. And, uh, as we, uh, start kind of publicizing this a little bit more and, um, so happy to answer any questions that, but if, if we could have some sort of signal of formal support, um, I don't want to be too pushy, but we, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. And I, I did mean to imply that we wouldn't give that support.
Oh, right. No, I
But what I meant mostly is we're unlikely to propose how it would get funded. Um, and, uh, a- along those lines, I think there would be a question, um, right back to you, Mr. Betancourt. Are you proposing to fund, um, uh, just the, the roof and the electrical work or the roof, the electrical work and the, um, burner work from the, um, uh, override if, if that were to go forward?
I, I, I think that there, that seems to be the, um, consensus and, you know, we haven't necessarily, uh, had a, a, a firm vote on this by, uh, the select board, um, because things have been, uh, the, the burner issue really has come up, uh, in the last week or so. That is something with this level of urgency and one of them failing again this weekend. So, um, we need to, we need to deal with that issue, um, a- as it's emergent. And it seems that, um, as you could see, you know, many of us were standing around those burners a year ago. It, it's somewhat of a known and it's worse than it was a year ago. So, um, we imagine in the next several months, it's not going to get better. And, uh, our communication with the manufacturer has not been, uh, fruitful. So, uh, so a, a long, a long answer to your question. Yes, I think we intend for the, the, the boilers, uh, to be, to be part of it, um, unless Mr. Nixon thinks otherwise.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, Ms. Bergstrom was next. You're muted, Ms. Bergstrom.
I, um, this is for Mr. Nixon and Mr. Betancourt. And, um, my understanding is that all of this project is a deferred need. That it, the Morocco culvert has been long planned to be the 10th project in the flood mitigation. And that, um, we have been, while it's been planned, it's also been put off for a long time. And that, um, similarly, the roof, the electrical and the burner at Morocco are not new needs to us that have suddenly come about, but needs that we know we've been trying to fund through other means. As Ms. Verdico aptly pointed out, even just replacing the sinks were her first rank in 2013 and that we are just, um, able to fund them now in 2020, 2021. So, um, I think that this makes sense to me because sometimes these larger projects can be extremely hard to fund out of our limited, um, just capital funding. But they are urgent needs. These aren't, um, necessarily just things that we're taking the opportunity of an override to fund, but things that we urgently need to fix and repair.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Uh, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. So, um, I, I just wanted to underscore and I'll, I'll ask Mr. Betancourt to weigh in if he feels like I'm off base on this. The, the, the urgency around the three, uh, boilers at Morocco really comes from, we need a common understanding about whether we would seek to replace them soon or not, and it all has to do with the dollars. So when, i- if and when there is a debt exclusion override, the ballot question with respect to Morocco would not be so specific as to say new roof and new electrical switch gear, new modular gas-fired boilers. It would be more likely to stay, um, you know, a very broad description of project 10, the replacement of a culvert, um, as a part of the flood mitigation program and extraordinary repairs at the Morocco school. It would really sort of be on those of us advocating maybe for the override to get into, into the weeds. Thinking back to the memo that I shared back in August, when you look at the cost of the electrical and the roof plus that priority three stuff, some separate controls and valves, I mean, it was coming to around three and a half million dollars. So that did not include the replacement of the three boilers. So if we were to say we need to move on that as well, then that really is not three and a half. It's 3.8 to 3.9, which it seems to me the select board needs to understand that we support that because they're taking our Morocco needs and they're adding that to their latest understanding of the presumed cost for project 10. So what it really boils down to is would this debt exclusion override, is it nine plus three and a half? Is it nine plus four? Is it 10 plus four? So that this is where the sausage is getting made over at Town Hall. Um, I, I would just say to the committee, the boilers have long been a problem. And they're not going to get better. We're not getting the support we need. We need to replace them. This is an opportunity to do it. I think it fits into how we described the needs at Morocco, but it would increase the cost from say three and a half to 3.8.
Mr. Betancourt, I, uh, it's also your meeting, but I don't know if, if you have a response, uh, you know, I don't want to
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll, I'll take my, uh, cue from you, Brian. Uh, I, yeah, it's that, that's the tough question, whether, um, you know, it seems to me that, um, the, uh, while we haven't discussed it formally and voted on it, that, um, it, it, it would be likely that we would fund the replacement of those boilers and increase the overall cost of, uh, the debt exclusion override that we're, we're seeking. Um, and we see, uh, we see that as a, as consistent with, um, really these immediate repairs. So it's, um, you know, we're not, we're not adding anything that, um, that we don't need. We've, we've, we've known about this for, uh, some time. It's not getting better. Um, and we have no real way of, uh, of keeping those boilers going, uh, at this point with, um, we're, we're kind of crossing our fingers. So, um, we don't want to increase the, um, the ask for the override, I think. But in this case, it, it seems like it's, it's absolutely necessary, not something we would be able to, to do at this point, um, out of the stabilization funds. So.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. I, I think that's helpful answer. Uh, Ms. Shapiro.
Yeah, just, um, given my last comment, I just wondered, um, you know, given the current climate and the economy and everything that we're all dealing with in Winchester, I'm just wondering, um, I guess this is for Mr. Betancourt and Mr. Nixon. What is the detriment of waiting a year on an override? And are there, are there specific projects at Morocco that need to get done here, like the boilers? And is project 10, does project 10 need to happen right now or is it something that we can think about waiting for a year?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good question. As, as, you know, saying that, um, the, the sequencing is important for us because we have, um, a Lynch override that now we, um, know about is, is we're going to be asking the voters for, um, and in a potential operating override, uh, in fiscal year 23 after that. So, um, the, uh, the, the longer that we wait, the less value, um, we get out of the immediate repairs. And, uh, uh, not just from a financial sense, but from the, um, the, the, the quality of, uh, and access to the curriculum that, that, you know, we intend to provide with the buildings, right? So, um, as Ms. Kirby had mentioned, I mean, the, the, uh, knowing the building and how things are there, it, it, it's, it's a different level of quality for, for those students there than it is in our other buildings. Um, and so, uh, I, the, wh- what, what is, um, you know, not great for us is the longer we wait on the, uh, the culvert project, the costs just, they're, they're increasing exponentially. So, I mean, that's part of our discussion with the community is that it, um, you know, our, our, our benefit is to be able to, uh, you know, service debt for, you know, an inexpensive amount of number because inexpensive cost because of our, um, our bond rating. And the, the longer we wait, the, uh, the more, more difficult that becomes. So, you know, we, we don't want to wait on the immediate repairs and then have, um, you know, and then, uh, a, a few years later, um, take all that down. So it's, it's, uh, the Mr. Nixon was saying, you know, we, we've got to be a little bit honest about, uh, with the community about, uh, you know, how long we're, we're going to provide debt service on some of these immediate repair expenses. We, we don't want to, we don't want to fund debt service and be paying it when we've taken the building down and put something else new.
Um, Mr. Nixon, I don't know if you have a direct response to that. And then Ms. Bol- you know, Ms. Boligné is next, but, uh, Ms. Shapiro's question was of Mr. Betancourt and Mr. Nixon. So if there's a direct response to that, otherwise I'll go to Ms. Boligné's and then come back to you.
Sure. I, yeah, I got a couple of thoughts from Ms. Shapiro. So with respect to whether, you know, the timeliness of this, whether or not we can wait, we have areas where water is leaking and through the roof now. So the, we have some indication that the roof is beginning to fail now. And that is actually the most, that is the single most expensive component of all of this work. If you look back to that August memo. Ms. Verdico will probably remember that at the same time we were talking about replacing hand washing sinks back in 2013, Mr. Lawson was, uh, expressing concern about the condition of the primary electrical switch gear in the building. So although that electrical infrastructure was installed when the building was first built in 66 and 67, the actual technology dates back to the Eisenhower administration. And, um, the consultant that we have just gotten on board has already expressed concern around some of the tests that had been recommended. Their concern is that the switch gear literally may not be able to sustain the test and might even be damaged through the testing. So we, we feel like we're, we're long since on borrowed time with the electrical switch gear. And without that, you know, we obviously can't open up the building. So, um, I think they're both, uh, terribly important. And then with respect to Ms. Shapiro's question around project 10, um, first of all, these need to happen in sequence. So you do need to work from downstream to upstream. This started in Medford at Main Street at the Craddock Locks and sort of worked its way up. There is no project nine that sort of disappeared long ago in terms of how these projects hit numbered and planned and so forth. Project eight is going to happen, I think I heard this summer. Um, Swanton Street Bridge is going in by the Crescent Building. Swanton Street's going to be shut down both ways. Um, it will be a headache for Ms. Whitmore to deal with when school opens in September. It's a major project, but it's about to happen. And so as soon as project eight is done, we could be working on project 10. But it is the largest and most complex of the projects. And unfortunately it does involve the MBTA. So that sort of adds a level of complication to it. To Mr. Betancourt's point, the longer we put it off, the more expensive it becomes. And it is the, it then sort of becomes the single most important project to minimizing the risk of flooding, not just on the Morocco site, but among those Morocco community households adjacent to the building that suffered incredible damage the last time we had the flood. So, you know, it's a little bit of a game of, you know, you could play, you, you play odds maker on it and, and wonder if it's worth taking a risk. I would not. I mean, I'm thankful we've gone this long without another major flooding event. I'm thankful that the electrical switch gear has not failed. But just remind folks, we've lost one of our three boilers and something else may fail soon if we don't act on this.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Um, Ms. Boligné, sorry, uh, just wanted to get the questions addressed as they, in the order they came.
That's, that's fine. And actually I think my
Oh, you just, you're muted.
I muted myself. Um, that's fine.
I muted myself. That's fine. And actually, I think my question was very similar to Ms. Shapiro's because I was wondering about the timing that was mentioned. And then I guess specifically with this project, what and perhaps there's no clear answer at this particular point, but how long do you think this particular project would extend? Like I feel project eight, if it's going, if it's starting in the summer and going into the fall, how about project 10?
Mr. Bettencourt, you probably would be the best to address the the project 10 timeline.
Yeah, so it would be really a couple of years. You know, there's there's design and permitting issues. So before we would even have bond any of the debt on it. So it's, you know, probably a three or four year project kind of all in from today till the end. So and, you know, there's a lot of complications, as Mr. Nixon was saying, with the MBTA, you know, with the ever source transmission line project. I mean, it's the project eight. I mean, we've we've got a lot kind of coming in that area infrastructure wise. So, you know, but I think that the the size of the project probably, you know, three or four years from now towards towards completion is my my best guess.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. Ms. Bergstrom. You're still muted.
I guess I'm also looking to understand, to expand upon the timing issue and my experience since I've been on the school committee is the longer we wait, the more expensive projects can be. And then it's a greater tax burden to our residents. And they get sometimes, in the case of Morocco, which is a building whose life we're trying to extend, perhaps even less value out of the project. You know, many of these, many of these repairs that we're talking about at Morocco and the culvert are necessary in deferred repairs. So had we been able to manage them five years ago, it may have cost us less than than it even is going to today. And if we continue to put it off, I have some concerns about how that cost could continue to balloon and burden our residents in Winchester as well versus tackling something that has already been deferred, is already identified as an issue. And managing that under 2021 costs instead of 2024 costs. So I guess I'm looking to understand a little bit more about that. And also, when I hear Mr. Nixon and Ms. Mr. Bettencourt talk about the experience of the boilers and Mr. Nixon talk about and Ms. Kirby talk about the experience of the boilers and what's happening there. And the roof leaking potentially in places at Morocco that we need to sort of patch and repair and keep going now. I also think about emergency repairs. And that I the most expensive thing I can possibly imagine would be having to replace a roof in an emergency way overnight or three boilers overnight, where we don't have sort of the opportunity to to investigate and find the most cost efficient ways to do that and instead have to do it in a very short timeframe. So I guess I'm looking from the slackboard to understand the cost of emergency repairs versus planned repairs and repairs we can do today versus deferred.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. I'm not sure. Was there a question or I mean?
What our history is in town sort of with emergency repairs and their cost versus being able to do planned repairs? And also how costs escalate over time.
Thank you. Mr. Bettencourt or Mr. Nixon probably both could address either one of those.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Chris, you know, Chris probably has more substantive knowledge, but you know, it it seems to me we're both, you know, Lynch has been very expensive for us, you know, on the emergency repair side. Morocco too, and you know, but, you know, it it seems to be like, you know, an episode of The Mandalorian when the ship goes down and you're trying to cobble together all these pieces from, you know, places and not sure if you can get them. I mean, part of it is just access to parts. I mean, we, whether it be for repairing a roof or repairing boilers or windows even, I mean, there's a there are a lot of needs at Morocco that, you know, we we deal with on on an emergency basis and those those numbers only only increase. But as I said, I think Chris probably has has some real real answers for you.
Before Mr. Nixon, note for the record that Ms. Shapiro had to leave the meeting. So I don't know, Mr. Bettencourt, if you it's entirely up to you if you want to adjourn your meeting and stay on as our guest to the end of this agenda item or what how you want to do it, tightly up to you.
Yeah, we'll keep going.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Nixon.
So I I think it's a good question, Ms. Bergstrom raises. So I would give you an actual sort of Winchester anecdote. And Ms. Verdique may remember this as well. We we actually, before we rebuilt Winchester High School, we put a brand new roof on the seawing before we then tore it all off. We did that because we had a lot, we had a continuously deteriorating roof. There was a spring break, kids came back, we had water in lockers, water on the floor. In fact, it rose to the level, it went to a level three grievance, which is pretty unusual filed by the union on the school committee. And what I, as I reflect back on that, there may have been a reluctance towards making an investment in a new roof on the seawing, knowing that we were heading down the tracks towards replacing Winchester High School. But in fact, replacing Winchester High School was going to be a three-year phased project. It was not something we were going to do overnight. And ultimately, we did that. We replaced the roof on on the seawing because we needed to. It was not inexpensive, but we needed to do it. I think the lesson that we all learned from that was, you know, we probably should have done it earlier. It would have saved us some money and we would have gotten more utility out of that before we, you know, ripped it off and rebuilt Winchester High School. The the good news out of that whole story, though, is at the end of the day, we do the right thing. I mean, it really, there was there had been so many patches on it, we we needed to do some major roof repair, even though we knew we were going to have to replace the building. So as I try to do my best to speak for the capital planning committee, I think what capital is concerned about is thinking about how old the roof is. So the the roof at Morocco is about four or five years older than the roof at Ambrose. It was not poorly constructed, but roofs don't don't last much more than 20 or 25 years. Morocco's is the new is the next roof to be replaced. We're already talking on the five-year capital plan about the need to replace the roof at Ambrose someday because that is good planning. So the Morocco roof, we need to address first, not second. And the concern, I think, on the part of the capital committee is if we don't do it now, we might find ourselves, say, seven years from now, having to urgently prioritize a roof replacement at Morocco above some other really important need. And it's going to cost us more money because we waited that long and we're not going to get the value out of it we would have if we had done it today.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I want to, I, there's two two hands raised. I want to ask Mr. Bettencourt. It sounds like one thing you're looking for from us today, this is not an action item, but discussion item, is a consensus to support lumping all three of the Morocco immediate repairs into an override and showing expressing support for that, which is sounds like is what you're looking for. Is that correct?
Yes, I think I think that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. So with that in mind, you know, there's two more hands raised. We have a long agenda. So let's take these last two questions and or comments and then see if the committee is willing to express by consensus that support. Ms. Verdique.
So I just wanted to swing around to that as well. And Mr. Nixon did a great job of identifying the two most pressing, the highest priority needs at Morocco, the roof and the electrical components. But I wanted to swing around even further to the point where Mr. Nixon was laying out in these August memo, the three or four priorities there. And there was a I forget it was three or four sort of lower priority that could be deferred, but might make a lot of sense to do in the next couple of years involving the hot water and some other plumbing components. And I just wanted to maybe focus in a little bit on the fact that if we really identify the boiler now as a high priority just for the functioning of the building and so that the learning can occur. I just want to get a sense from the school committee about whether they would be, you know, okay with the amount of the override being sufficient to cover the roof, the boiler, the roof, the electrical and the boiler, but maybe deferring to maybe as 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 part of capital planning or part of capital funding or some other source of funding for the that last tier in the August report. We may not be able to get, you know, just the sheer amount of an override is important. And we might might not be able to get to everything in that August memo and the boiler. So the boilers. So I just wanted to get a sense of that, if that's possible.
Thank you, Ms. Verdique. So just my own impressions is I thought that's sort of what we were discussing, which was that those would be down the roads, that they're smaller, they could potentially, if needed, and it's likely they are needed, could come out of capital funding and would not need to be part of this override. But I would defer to other members of the committee if they have different opinions. As far as I feel like what we're discussing is packaging the roof, the electrical repairs and the boiler replacement into the culvert. So it's and and maybe I just want to make sure that that's what I I seem to be hearing. But I would open it up to other members if they're if they're hearing or thinking something different because we want to be really clear. That's a good point, Ms. Verdique. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I just want to make a math clarification. So if if we were to do that, just want the committee to be aware that the presumed value of that priority three scope, which I've thrown up on screen for people to see, that's actually a little less than what we're budgeting right now for that boiler replacement. So if you were to, in essence, if you were to swap out what we're saying is priority three, even though it's a top priority, take out this scope of priority three so that we would have some funds to do the boiler replacement. It still could bump it up a little bit, but it's still on the order of remember this, that these are conceptual numbers because we haven't got the roof report yet. We don't have the electrical specs yet. It's around three and a half million dollars. It could be less. It could be 3.8. We literally have to get the work done to know.
So to thank you to Ms. Verdique's question, I think the committee is aware of that. But I think it's good to make that crystal clear. I see Ms. Marshant has her hand raised. I don't know if that addresses your your question, Ms. Verdique, or if you have a follow up on that.
Well, I would just say that we'll try. Again, as as Mr. Nixon pointed out, we don't have exact numbers. And if we can get all of it done, you know, for what we can and fund, then of course we'll we'll try to do that. But I just want people to be to understand. I want to understand your position.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Marshant.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. Everyone's done on this. My comment isn't based on the technicalities of especially at the level Mr. Nixon understands it in terms of the repairs and what's needed and the culvert. My point is to just state that this is a an opportunity for us to put it before the taxpayers because I personally have not sorry, you can't hear me? Can anybody else hear me?
We can all, we can hear you. I could hear you.
You were a little, you were a little soft when you started. I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. Thanks, Michelle. I was saying that though I don't understand the technicalities, I hear the the urgent need of these projects. On the other hand, I wonder if we have a good understanding of the state of our taxpayers with COVID pandemic and the economy and everything that's happening in our in our country and on our state. I can't make that judgment call for anybody else, but I can make it for my family. So I'm happy to support the opportunity to put this before the taxpayers. Because yes, they're urgent, but that has to be balanced on the back of what can we handle as taxpayers in this town? We're asking for a lot of things and everything is urgent. And so I support however Mr. Nixon has laid it out and all the numbers he's laid out. He has a fundamental understanding of engineering and buildings that I don't. On the other hand, I I look forward to to the campaign of proving to the taxpayers that this is definitely needed despite the constraints that our economy is putting on everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. Ms. Verdique, your hand is raised. Is that a residual hand? Residual hand? So that is one voice in 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 support of putting this forward as an override. Again, that's not our choice. It's in support of your choice, Mr. Bettencourt and the select board to put it forward as an override for the taxpayers to make that choice. Ms. Bollinger.
I just wanted to clarify, and I think you had said this, the Morocco culvert, because so much of the Morocco area is is in within a flood plain, then the Morocco culvert project would be necessary to bring the school area and houses, the surrounding houses out of the flood plain. And then also looking forward towards a potential NSBA replacement project down the road. This would kind of be like setting a baseline to be able to have options to build the school in that area. A new school in that area.
So, Mr. Nixon, if you're amenable to that, and then Mr. Bettencourt, and then we'll look for consensus after the two of you. So we can get on. We have principals here and I don't want to keep them waiting longer than we have to. Mr. Nixon.
Sure. So so if one looks at the 100-year flood plain, which is a legal document, there is a small corner of the Morocco school that sits in the 100-year flood plain. But as a practical matter, when we've had major flooding events, the water overtakes the whole lower level of the school, which is why I threw up that image. And so, yes, if we proceed with project 10, we not only then we remap because we're fundamentally conducting water differently and we lower the risk for, you know, for flooding the site and many homes do come out of it. But it then it opens up, even though just a corner of Morocco sits in the 100-year flood plain, much of the site, what we think of as the Morocco parcel, if you will, does sit in the 100-year flood plain. And so then by moving forward with this project, if we were to, if we were to build a new Morocco replacement somewhere on that site, it gives us more flexibility. And lastly, Mr. Chairman, because the question, Ms., I think Ms. Shapiro had asked a question about timing for project 10. I did hear back from engineering and planning. So if a spring override were successful, then, you know, we might, we might send something out to to bid in time for like a spring of 23, start of construction, long project, you know, it could take a year. I think spring 23 is kind of when we might, well, not spring, but we would look to do like we could do roof work, frankly, maybe as early as the summer of 22. So these could start to happen pretty quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Mr. Bettencourt, and then I will look for consensus to support you moving forward. Our support for your moving forward on this.
Thank you, Mr. Viallias. So part of what our effort looks like in the time moving forward between now and the end of March is several info sessions with residents and town meeting members. And, you know, we've found success in the past with doing that where we can answer a lot of questions and let people know that this is an an urgent override for us. And it actually is a a fiscally responsible one as well, as we've heard that the the costs go up and the value is less the longer that we wait. So so we would hopefully have the school committee's support for attending some of those info sessions with us too. And and as you can see, Mr. Nixon has has quite a deep understanding of these issues. And I it's, I think for for him, it's probably hard to not advocate for to folding a lot more, you know, emergency needs for other buildings as well to this. So we're, it it seems like it's a it's a tough time. But this is, you know, an absolute need and it's as lean as we possibly can make it.
Thank you, Mr. Bettencourt. And I would happily volunteer, Mr. Nixon, to any or all of those public information sessions. So I'm looking around the table, around the school committee table for consensus support as we heard from Ms. Marshant, which again is not is, at least at this point in time, is support for putting this forward as an override for the voters to make the decision on these. an override for the voters to make the decision on these. It would be the three projects. But again, as Ms. Verdicchio said, it will also depend on the funding available. So I'm just looking around the table, and I'm looking for nods of support. I I see nods of support. This is essential work that has to be done. The sooner we do it, the more value we get. It's like replacing your car a year before you move overseas and sell it. You might as well have replaced it five years before because you get five years of that new car instead of one. We don't want to have two years of, you know, we're forced to replace the roof a year before we have to replace the building. We may have to do it. But we'd rather get 10 years of use out of that roof rather than one. So you have that support from us. We we totally support these projects. And then it's again, it's a, you know, supporting whether the 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 taxpayers are willing to pay. And I think that we have a good argument to be made that that waiting on these is is not fiscally prudent. So Mr. Betancourt, I thank you for coming today, you and the committee for coming to discuss this. I think it's important. And thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And we'll adjourn the meeting of the Select Board. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to return you all. Thank you very much. I'm going to return you all as attendees. You're welcome to stay as attendee, of course, but I want to oh, as Bolaniers, you're faster than I am. And with that, I would like to, as we mentioned, that we're going out of order. And I mentioned exactly how we would like to go out of order. I would like to elevate Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney for our next agenda item, again, which is out of order, and that we voted to do that out of order, which is the draft revisions to the high school program of studies and the middle school program studies. I think it makes sense to elevate both of them at the same time, even though we will, according to our agenda, we'll have the high school revisions first followed by the middle school. So I see Mr. Lynn, I see Mr. Mahoney. And let me just get to the agenda page. My apologies. Since I went out of order, it's my I take responsibility for going out of order. So Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Lynn, but Mr. Mahoney most specifically. Good morning, and thank you for waiting around and listening to some some fun stuff about Morocco. You're here today to give your sort of a first draft of the program of studies update. And you have sharing privileges if you want to share anything, if you just want to talk through it, we all have it. I should note to members of the committee that while in our packet is only the changes to the course of studies on in our Google Drive is the the full course of studies that have been redlined as well. So they have at least to some extent, I don't think the removals are still there, but I think anything that's been changed is in red. So, Mr. Mahoney, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. Nice to see everybody's face at home, it looks like today. So traditionally, in the last five years, we've done the course of studies, and I always call it a living document. It sort of reflects where we are as a school and where we're going. In the last couple of years, we've done significant overhauls for the math department. Social studies and English are starting to add more diverse texts and readings over the last couple of years as well. And we've we've done tweaks and and moved language. This year, it's a very small document of changes. It's more of a pruning, if you will, more of taking stock, looking where we could go in the future years, in the upcoming years. So we don't have a lot to go over today, as you might imagine, as sort of a one of those conversations and topics and things that is important, but we don't want to make big changes while we're in the middle of all the changes that we're experiencing in our day to day experience. So again, it's more of a pruning, more of a tweaking of small words here and there or small adjustments. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to go over that. We're not a lot of major changes, though. We're keeping it very simple this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I would open it up to, you know, first of all, Dr. Evans, I don't know if you have anything you want to say about the high school program of studies or just directly go to committee members.
So just a couple of words. Thank you very much. I think what has been very helpful for us as a district when I try to look for silver linings in the pandemic is the effort to align curriculum, both in terms of philosophy and also scope and sequence, pre-K to 12, to understand that we're a full district. And Jen Ellen Emma has been working closely with teachers for several years to lead this effort. The posting on our website of the course descriptions, the specific information about each course, I think is helpful for students and parents as they as they do a look ahead. And I'm also very grateful for the equity work that's been done around across all disciplines, but especially for English Language Arts and Social Studies to incorporate more diverse texts, to be sure that teachers focus on cultural proficiency. And so you won't see those changes necessarily summarized in this document that's presented by Mr. Mahoney today. But I think it's important for the school committee to know that all of the directors, coordinators and teachers are deeply committed to ensuring that our coursework matches what our students need to know and be able to do to be productive, responsible citizens, and to be ready for whatever comes after high school. So I just want to commend the efforts district wide on on those fronts and in commend particularly the high school directors for really being open to making changes that earn the best interest of students. And so I'm sure that there'll be specific questions from members, but and that Dennis will be happy to answer, or Jen, as she works very closely with all of the directors as well.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mahoney. Nice to see you today.
Hello, Mr. Nixon. Nice to see you.
So in years past, we've had some really interesting discussion with you around what a prerequisite is, what it should be, that we've acknowledged some of our learners, for for some of our learners, you know, the best they'll do in a subject may be a C or a B minus, but they're still ready for what's next. And in courses of study of years past, we had some pretty high bars in terms of prerequisites. And I think you've you've begun to make some changes there. And as I looked at, I just I wanted to share this because I I thought it was, I thought this was really interesting. It looks to me like, if everybody can see this, what some of the changes I'm seeing seem to acknowledge in words what I call the mathematics, let me scroll up here, the circuit diagram, you know, that shows all these different possible connections that I'm encouraged because I think what I'm seeing here is an acknowledgement that, you know, depending upon what sending course you're coming from, there may be different expectations. So I that I'm encouraged by that. Can you just speak maybe more broadly to how the conversations have gone, what your sense is of prerequisites, both for this coming year that's reflected in this book, as well as sort of where we're going. And it doesn't have to be about math specifically. I just pulled that up. I I'd love to know what your thinking about that is. And then if you can also kind of speak to the elephant in the room, which is this is a very strange school year. And so kids are not having the kind of face to face instruction that they're accustomed to. So are it, does the does the language in this book, particularly the language around things like prerequisites, does it take into account maybe some different expectations around either comprehension and performance for this year? Does that make sense?
It makes some sense. Thanks for asking. And I think we still have to credit the math department for their flexibility and and all the work that they've done for the last few years about creating different pathways. And and it, in some examples, we've learned that the pathway isn't so simple, it requires extra work, and we're learning on the fly like like any organization does. But all credit for flexibility and adjusting expectations goes to the individual departments. And math department certainly is a leader in that regard. The prerequisites we have to remember are an important guideline. It's it's just, it's a statement of saying, this is really what you should have in order to get to the next level. It is written as this is what you need because it's an expectation, but we always have the override process that some students avail themselves of. But it is, you know, a tried and true method of saying, this is what you can expect if you go in this direction with this grade or without this grade. And unfortunately, we do see, you know, the override process, which we're very flexible on, we do allow overrides into almost every class, I believe, in the whole school and in in the entire high school. Oftentimes, the when students do don't measure up to the prerequisite of that grade or of that expectation, they struggle in that next class, and they struggle mightily, and they have to move down. But we're willing to give them that opportunity with the override. And some students do flourish. And that's a great success story that we like to see. So the prerequisites are there as a as a marker, as a roadmap and a guide to say, hey, this is this is what you should be doing if you're going in this direction. And then conversations with the teacher, I think, are the most important piece because the teacher sees the student in class every day, or in this case, twice a week, more for some students. And they see that the student's work ethic, they see the student's output, they see the student's engagement, and and parents don't see that on a day to day. And students don't observe each other doing that on a day to day as well. So it's the conversation with the teacher is the most important piece of this puzzle because they see the student grow from, you know, September to the February, March, April. And they're able to gauge really, you know, we want to, we don't want to see what's in the student's best interest, but we want to be out to care for them and to guide them in the right direction based up our our deep level of experience. So the prerequisites for this year, Chris, is it's it's interesting. Obviously, we we don't know what the future, we don't know what the end of the year is going to look like. I think we'll be having a lot more conversations. But we did a break breakdown of a grade analysis, and our grades are much higher this year than they were last year, which is a good thing. I think there's a lot more flexibility in grading, a lot more flexibility in work submission. And so students are able to demonstrate their learning, which is one of those questions that I was previously on with a student when when Evan Edler was speaking about what's working. I think the amount of flexibility and outside the box thinking has really helped helped our staff. Just think, we're forced to think creatively, and it's not a, it's not a bad thing. And forced to find different methods in different ways for students to demonstrate success. We're still, we we still make mistakes. We still, you know, have to figure it out for each student. But I think that's one of that'll be one of those positives. I think the students might not always see it, but certainly I see my staff working, working overtime to try and get creative and be flexible. So prerequisites are an important guide. They, year after year, they they do demonstrate what, you know, we we sort of know what we're talking about. But that conversation with the teacher and the student is of the utmost importance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Additional questions or comments on the draft program course of studies? Ms. Berksstrom?
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I really appreciated that explanation of the prerequisites because I know, as Mr. Nixon has said, we've talked about that at the table before. You mentioned the the grades, and I'd like to ask sort of a parallel question. Also, in the past, for some of the courses, the teachers have been able to sort of provide work for students over the summer to be able to prepare them for those classes that they may be interested in taking beyond just simply summer school classes. Given that this is a pandemic year, and some students' grades may be higher or more successful under this model, I'm sure we also have some students who have been previously successful that may be struggling more under this model. And does the high school plan any additional sort of levels of support to be able to have students be able to take the classes that they had sort of planned to take and be ready for those classes their next year?
You know, it, so we don't have anything formalized, and we haven't had a lot of conversations about summer work at all yet. It's certainly, we're still living month to month here, day to day, particularly last week. So it's, say, and this week as well. So I can't say we've had formal conversations. I will say, though, that a number, a few members of our staff, Cheryl Ranieri, who's in guidance, Amber Haines and Nicole Dusso is also work in the guidance office. We've set up a i- it's their program, and they could speak more more intelligently about it than I can. But it it is sort of like an extra help session for all students, no matter who they are, what what program they're in, in order to get them more organized with you know, just in general executive functioning and just organizational skills. So it's it is sort of like an extra help, but an organized and that's followed a methodology for support for students, for all students. So that's a new program based out of the need that we're seeing during the pandemic. And we've got a good portion of students that are availing themselves of that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Additional questions or comments from the committee on the high school draft program course of studies? Ms. Bolaniers? Oh, no, no question?
I will say that one of the new courses that we're, you know, I know FTEs will be very tight coming this year, but my focus, because we always have, in my opinion, my professional opinion, we have too many students that take studies. Studies are great. Studies are useful. But we have a lot of students at the high school that are in studies because we don't have enough sections of electives for them to get into. So a real focus of mine, and I've been I've been saying this for two years, is to increase the arts, increase music and increase technology in terms of sections available to students. So instead of taking a a you know, instead of being in a study, which again is useful, they could take an engineering course, they could take a music course that they they just never thought they'd be interested in. Or they could take an additional art course or an intro to art course that could put them in a path that they least expected. We don't know, you know, we're doing a program of studies, and we don't know what music will look like next year. We don't know what the expectations will be. So the Costellos put their heads together and they and we're going to offer an intro to guitar class next year, which is, I mean, I think that's awesome. We don't know if students will sign up for it. It wasn't based off of interest. It was based off of, we don't know what music is going to look like. So there are some creative offerings that are from the pandemic that are in the handbook or in the program of studies.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Bolaniers, you had raised your hand, and Ms. Marshant actually digitally raised her hand. So Ms. Bolaniers first, and then Ms. Marshant.
Oh, I was wondering, we had recently approved a grant for a book club around new and diverse texts. And I'm just wondering, do you, how is that envisioned that some of those texts might get pulled in eventually?
That is a hot button topic right now, Ms. Bolaniers. I believe that there's a few different book study groups that are looking to examine more diverse texts. We do have a a group of class officers who I work with almost every Friday that we have I can get you in touch with them as well. And they they've got a group that has a grant that they've applied for for a particular text. The the difference between reading a text to, you know, have a have a book group and maybe talk about how we can get this into the classes is is a big, it's a big conversation. It's a big leap. Because we would love students to say like, we we read this book as a club. We would love to put this into our curriculum. But it's not, it's not as simple as the teacher saying, okay, I'm going to teach this tomorrow. I mean, it it, we have to respect the time and investment that teachers put into teaching a text, breaking it down and exploring it. And it's a, it's a big conversation that isn't something that we just read a book and do. So I know there's a couple of book clubs or book groups in the community, in the general community right now. We do have one that's beginning the process with our class officers. And they're, we meet every Friday. It's basically basically anti racism work that I asked the class officers to start in September with my you know, with my my support. They meet every Friday, and they have four different groups. One's going to work with K through five. One one's working on a a text. They, and they have a a couple of other things going on. It's really highly organized. It's really impressive, to be honest with you. But that's our students. They never cease to impress us.
Thank you. Wow.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Marshant, your hand is.
Hi. Thank you, Principal Mahoney and Principal Lynn. This is probably for both of you more of a comment. I I first of all, want to check in and see how you and your staff are doing. It's an incredibly challenging time is is a is becoming cliche, but so true for all of us. I also, I'm happy to see that the responsiveness to the staff's need for creativity. I think what it feels to me as a non educator, that it keeps them interested in the progress of their own profession and the students as they change. And it helps them be more responsive to what is happening in the world so that they are supporting their students not only academically, but socially, emotionally, and teaching them to be more critical thinkers, to ask the right questions, to have follow through. And I feel like that's kind of what leadership is demonstrating for their teachers. And I feel like it's a very healthy new dynamic if there's a silver lining. I feel like it's a very healthy new dynamic if there's a silver lining to all of this. That public education, as limited as it is in funding, is starting to look more like that innovative. World of education. So, um, if you have anything to add to that and to check in with us and, uh, my deep gratitude as always.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. I think, uh. Uh, as you can see, I'm pulling my hair out and James is growing his facial hair out on, so we're we're. We're in similar paths, speaking for James. The, there are silver linings. And they're sometimes difficult to talk about though, because we don't wanna celebrate successes during a pandemic and and. Um, we we do recognize there are a lot of, uh, a lot of our staff being innovative and creative. And yes, the pandemic has has forced us to do that. And so that is a silver lining, but it's it's a delicate conversation because. We don't wanna celebrate a lot of success during a time like this. We wanna recognize and and have a sense of internal pride, I think. Uh, but we'll, we'll get to the positives, I think, when we're through the woods.
Thank you, um, uh, Ms. Berkestrom.
I just have one quick question to follow up on that because I appreciate Ms. Marshant's comment about the teacher input in our program of studies. And I guess I've never asked this before, Mr. Mahoney, do we take student input when we're thinking about the courses for next year? And how does that play into the changes that are made in the program?
That's a good question. I mean, historically departments and teachers ask what student interest is. I don't, we don't do a formal poll. Um, that would probably yield, you know, a million different requests and results. And, uh, set expectations inappropriately. So I know. It's based off of, I think, anecdote elevens. I know for a few years, a few kids have wanted a genetics course, uh, that's. After having conversations with their science teacher and something we'd like to eventually offer, but we're just not there yet. So it's more anecdotal. I know Mr. Nixon is is requested a journalism course year after year, but. That doesn't come up a- as often as as other requests. So there is not a formal. Um, process, but certainly. We float classes out based off of student interest. If we were, you know, floating a class out based off of staff interest, we we would get students, I'm sure, to sign up for it, but. Um, it'd be, it benefits us more to say, what are the students interested in? If, can we teach that?
Well, I appreciated hearing you were adding more music and arts and drama.
That's the goal. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it's gonna happen. It's all.
Right.
You know, financial.
But I wasn't sure if that had come from the students or if that was an educator driven decision as well, or a little bit of both.
A little bit of both. Um. Uh, you know, the students might not say they want specific, you know, like a specific art class, but they'd like to take more art. They don't say, you know, they want guitar, but they'd like to take more music. And it also comes from. When they're sitting with guidance and they, we say, well, we can't get you into any section, so you have to take a. You have to take a study. Now, there's plenty of students that'll say, no, I'd rather take a course, but there's no section for them to sit in.
Thanks. It's good to hear that you're able to take the student input and and utilize it in the best way you can. I appreciate that.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Nixon.
Well, I was really restraining myself from mentioning journalism this year and then the principal goes and says it. So I will only say this.
I wanted to keep the tradition alive, Mr. Nixon.
This was a very, very popular course when we offered it and we had and was taught by someone who had professional experience as a, as a journalist. And I think we had some challenges filling that position. Um, subsequent to that and participation fell off somewhat. I think with the right, you know, finding the right person to teach the class. You might be surprised. I I I have long felt if you build it, they will come. And I feel like every year when we talk about the course of studies and the absence of journalism and it goes back, my, my. My colleague, we saw earlier, his name is Verdicchio, I thought very eloquently made a case to bring journalism back. Years ago. I feel like every year we talk about this, it's a year where I think we need an understanding of journalism in our young people more than ever. And I feel that now even more strongly than I felt a year ago, and I'll probably feel the same way a year from now. So if you build it, they will come and I will be a very happy guy if before I leave the Winchester School Committee, we find a way to. Uh, at least offer journalism and see what the students say. I think it it. It's really, really warranted. I understand there are other. Other needs and other interests out there, um, we just might be surprised. Thanks.
Okay, I'd offer you two things that our social studies department does an excellent job of breaking down. Um, the different levels of media that we're, that students in in our population are exposed to and what is biased, what's not biased. So we, we do have a media chart that. Um, Chris Kohiatt's updates quite often. So students know whether, what they're listening to, what side it's leaning towards. Um, they do obviously do a ton of work on, uh, research and when. Um, where you wanna get your primary sources from. So we do an excellent job in terms of how to get information or how to decipher information. Obviously, they're like, students, students are with us for just X, X number of days, X number of hours a week. Uh, and media is constantly bombarding, so it's almost a stronger presence than what we teach, but we do a really good job at it. I do, I I I will say, she's not on our staff, but I am a big fan of Karen Conley's and she was an investigative reporter. Uh, in another life, so there is an opportunity to maybe hire. Hire a journalism teacher in the future if she's available.
No, me. So in other words, Karen Connolly might come forward with a grant and the grant is Karen Connolly. That could be exciting. I would just say, what you're describing to me is media literacy and we talk about digital literacy. Media literacy is so important and Ms. Marshant has spoken about this in the past, her confidence that. You know, media literacy is sort of a component of many of the things we offer at the high school and and I have no doubt about that. I think you speak to that very eloquently. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Um, when we talk about primary sources, I know my kids are terrified to use Wikipedia for anything. And I'll be looking it up in Wikipedia. Like, here's the answer, like, no, you can't trust Wikipedia. I'm like. Yeah, but are they gonna lie about what year somebody was born? But but you've done a good job instilling fear of Wikipedia. Um, um, but I I I'm joking, but but actually serious. Uh. Um, I have two quick questions. Uh, one is, uh, a a detail sort of weedy. Um, in this, uh, course of studies, if you could do a quick search and replace in the entire document for the word Satcham, that would be great.
That's fair, very fair, sure.
Um, uh, and I don't need to go beyond that. And the second question is really open ended. Um, it's probably a discussion for a later time when we have a math update, but, um. Uh, so it's, I'm just gonna ask it, but I don't expect an answer. Do we need math ten nine to be taught or is that, uh? Excessive, uh, number of math courses that we have and and the reason I ask, and again, this is not for today, but it's just, we're talking about course of studies. Um, anecdotally, and the floral anecdote is not data, but anecdotally, um, I have. Heard that some of the students coming from that don't feel as well prepared going into the next level as students who took the, um, stag nine, stag ten course. So. Uh, I I don't expect you to say yes or no. I mean, I, unless you are willing to say yes or no, but it's it's definitely an open question. We have. A lot of math courses and I just wanna make sure that that's something that we need and and are we doing our students a service by having that many math courses? Open question, don't expect an answer, but that's all I wanted to put out there. So thank you. And thank you for all the work in getting this to us with the red line copy as well. It was very helpful to look through and see that.
No problem.
So, um. With that, seeing no more additional questions, I would, uh, like, thank you, Mr. Mahoney, and move on to. The middle school course of studies, uh, pretty much same deal. Mr. Lynn, uh, you now, you've got a preview of how this works.
Yep, thank you. Thanks for, um, having me. Um. I'd just like to begin by, um, wishing all the counselor staff, uh, out there, uh, happy, um, National School Counselor Appreciation Week. Um, as we talk about programs for studies and, um, Dr. Evans, uh, talked about that a little bit as well. Um, that our courses, um, the way that we're moving towards is that, uh, social emotional learning is gonna be. A heavy part of every single one of the courses. So I just wanna make sure that we recognize that. So even though we're talking about details, uh, regarding course description, I wanna make sure that we all. Keep in mind that social emotional learning, um, will continue to, uh, play a heavy part in, um. Um, uh, every single thing that we do with our students and our, uh, school counselor has a big role in that. So, uh, definitely wanna give a shout out to, uh. All those professionals, even though program studies are very infrequently will mention them. Um, very similar to, um, Mr. Mahoney, um, this year, programmer studies really thinking about just pruning and making sure that, uh. Uh, what we put in a document, uh, reflects, um, accurately what we're doing in a classroom. And so, uh, the main changes, um, this year, uh, is world language. Uh, this is now, we're gonna be heading into the third year where all three grade levels, uh. Will be offered world language. And so heading into next year, uh, we actually will have three, uh, different, uh, curriculum that we're offering because sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. They're all learning different things, uh, as, uh, two years ago, that group of sixth graders move up, uh, uh, our grade level. So, uh, the main adjustment is, uh, pertains to world language. Uh, before I move on to others, I also wanna give a plug to, uh, our language staff. Um, they pretty much teach the same amount of students. Uh, as the team teachers, but, uh, a number of our world language teachers are not the same as our team teachers. So, uh. Our class sizes inevitably will be bigger in the world language and certainly I recognize, uh, FTEs are gonna be, uh, tough to come by. Uh, given the situations that we're in, but I definitely want to, uh, uh, keep this, uh, or have everybody in, uh, the back of our minds. So it's, I wanna look at class sizes. Our world language class sizes are typically much bigger than our typical, uh, team classes. So again, something to keep in mind. This year of all years, we are recognizing the amount of time that we have with students are precious. And, um, so the other piece that we are moving forward with the changes in our social studies and also, uh, science classes at the eighth grade level. We're removing, uh, the placement exam. Uh, we feel like, um, there's plenty of, uh, information that our teachers can gather. And in order for them to make a proper recommendations about whether, uh, the honors, ninth grade honors classes and social studies and science are suitable for our particular student. And so therefore we don't feel like, uh, there's a need to spend time or, uh, give other students a pressure to have to take that test. So we are removing that as, uh. A criteria for, um, recom- the recommendation process. And, uh, the last change is really, again, just, uh, uh, semantics and to make sure that, uh, what we're teaching is aligned with, uh, what is in the program of study documents. So. We would like to change the title of the computer technology education courses through digital literacy and computer science because, uh. You know, uh, that name, uh, reflects, uh, what is actually going into the classroom. Uh, digital literacy, uh, is becoming more and more. Important aspect of, uh, where we need to make sure the students understand. Uh, I think, uh, we have all talked about that in today's meeting. So. Again, the title just, we just want the title of the course to reflect, um, uh, what is actually being taught.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lynn. Um, straightforward, um, I think pretty, uh, pretty easy to understand the changes you're, um, proposing. Uh, are there questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Berkestrom.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Lynn. I appreciate you, um, uh, considering the students and thinking about removing that exam. For next year and possibly just going forward if you find that it's working well for kids to, um, not take that. So I think this is a great year to sort of. Um, test getting rid of that exam and seeing if kids still have success in those classes and being thoughtful about, um. You know, um, just that, sort of that high stakes test to enter a class at sixth grade and, um, what expectations that sets for kids early on in middle school. So I was. I was happy to see that there. Um, my question, um, for you, it's similar form that I had for Mr. Mahoney is that. Um, are there any classes that, um, the staff has discussed, um, the leadership team has discussed adding at sixth grade potentially as an elective next year? Um, coming out of the pandemic that might help students transition to sixth grade because we may not have the opportunity, um, at, with our fifth graders. Um, to prepare them sort of for that transition as much as we once did. Um, for example, have you considered offering, um, an executive functioning? Elective, uh, for the incoming sixth graders particularly next year?
That's a very good question. Um, I think our, uh, conversation mostly revolves around how do we incorporate those, um, uh, teaching of those skills into our existing. Uh, practices, um, because, um, um, one of the things that we don't want the kids to think about, just as, um. Uh, many years ago, when we, uh, when the public school become, uh, very focused on bullying, we don't want the kids to think that, well, bullying is just something else. That is outside of what they do on a day to day basis. So in terms of executive functioning, just as, uh, social emotional learning, what we feel like will be helpful is to make sure that all teachers has. Good understanding of what are, uh, um, uh, best practices regards to teaching kids executive functioning or SCL. And how do we incorporate that? And also, uh, you know, uh, to expand that further, same thing with things like equity, inclusion and social justice. That it shouldn't be a separate course, but it should be part of what we discuss with kids, right? Very frequently, uh, we do that and, uh. A lot of that pressure falls on social studies or science. I mean, social studies or English classes, but we wanna make sure kids understand that all these. Important values, uh, cuts across the board. So again, our work is thinking about what are good practices? How does that play into what I do on a day to day basis when I'm interacting with kids or teaching kids?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Lynn? Ms. Marshant?
As a mom of a soon to be sixth grader, um. I can't even imagine all the work you're having to consider on the transition. Um, do you feel that the program of study and I, I'm sure there's a lot more work to be done, but that you are. Prepared to take in this incoming. Class of sixth graders who are gonna be both. Overwhelmed by this new experience and, um, have had a very disruptive year.
Absolutely. I think, um, this goes through, um, you know, I have to give a lot of credit to our sixth grade staff. Um, I think, um, you know. Just anything, I think the pandemic is, um, you know, uh, helped us, um, think about, um, you know, what we can and cannot do. And, uh, so the teachers themselves are having some, you know, self-conversation as well, you know, what are, uh, areas that we need to, uh, um, you know, uh, do better on. And so, um, yes, I mean, the the students themselves are coming in with, uh, some pieces where they might not be. At the same place as previous sixth graders, but same thing with our teachers as well. They're also recognizing what are some things that have not been doing very well in the past? What are some things that I've been doing well and how do I, uh, make sure that, uh, the pieces that I do well continues and how do I adjust the pieces that I don't do well? And so we're absolutely ready for the incoming sixth graders. And, um, you know, a lot of these pieces are about, um, you know, figuring out what we don't know until we actually see them. And I think the sixth grade, uh, team, uh, are very proficient in, um, you know, adjusting on the fly. All right, these are kids that we had never met before. Yes, we have some information based on, um, you know, what the fifth grade teachers have reported to us, but, um. You know, we also, uh, need to remember that between, uh, uh, June of their fifth grade year and also, uh, September of their sixth grade year, some kids sprout out very quickly. Right? And what are things that, uh, they're not able to do, they're not able to do in just two short months. And so we're gonna welcome every single kid that, uh, appears through our doors, wherever they are. We're gonna spend some time doing some assessment, you know, during the first couple of weeks to figure out what they can do, what they cannot do, what are their fears, what are some. Uh, places where they just feel absolutely comfortable and we're gonna, uh, we're gonna adjust.
Yeah, I'm excited, um, for my son personally and I'm, I'm looking forward to the conversations your sixth grade team. Has with all the fifth grade teams because, um, the work that both the regular ed and the special education teachers have done with. At least from my perspective with the fifth graders has been incredible. And so I look forward to having. To making sure that we've given enough time and resources for that dialogue between the two teams because. They do look different, but there's some incredible strengths too that are coming your way. And so I'm encouraged by that. Thank you.
Yes, um, I think I'm, um, very glad that you mentioned the piece about, um, understanding the kids' strengths because, uh. You know, we definitely want, uh, a conversation, that transition conversation to focus on what the kids can do. What can they offer us, right, and capitalize on that and, um, not go down the road of, oh, what these kids cannot do. And so therefore, um, you know, um, you know, we lower the bar for them. And so we absolutely do that, um. Uh, prior to the, uh, uh, transition process of the elementary principals and I will always make sure that the teams that is doing. That's having discussion about these kids. I will remind all the staff, let's focus on the asset here. Okay, what they're bringing to the table as opposed to what they just cannot do or watch out for this kid, that sort of conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Uh, Ms. Berkestrom, your hand is raised. Is that a residual?
It's a, yeah, it's a follow up to Ms. Marshant.
Perfect.
Um, and it's actually for Dr. Ellen Nema. Um, it, um, Ms. Marshant brings up conversations between, uh, fifth grade and sixth grade teachers. I also. Um, I'm curious about eighth and ninth grade teachers. We've, uh, been able to increase our collaboration time this year. How do these courses of studies and we think about them, um, play into sort of that professional development time and the opportunities for teachers to talk across grade levels? And understand, um. that even though these programs of studies may look consistent as they have from year to year, that what, how does that affect content?
Yeah, I mean, I think as we've all talked about, this year is different in terms of how much we've had to adjust around curriculum. But it's also different in a positive way in terms of how much collaboration time we have. So in a way, a little bit, the eight to nine transition is a little bit easier. Just because you think of the terms of, you know, you have the directors that are the six to 12 directors. So not always, but very frequently, their middle and high school teams are meeting together with their collaboration times and department meetings. Certainly, they have projects they work on separately and or across or mix between the two. They're not all always together. But they have a nice opportunity for that. And, you know, we've already met last month. Dennis and James and the directors and Lori and I met to kind of do a check in on where we are with our curriculum. And just will continue to be like monitoring that as we go. So that as we get more into the spring and we need to identify what we need to do for the summer, so that we know better what the fall will be like. There's a nice built in way to do that at the secondary level where we certainly will do it at the elementary as well. But there's not a, an already embedded structure for that. We create those meetings, so.
Thanks, it's all really great to hear.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Lynn? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Lynn, again, for keeping it straightforward. Actually, both of you for keeping it pretty straightforward this year. Not a lot of change we want to look for in a year when everything else is changing. So we look forward to, I presume, Dr. Evans, we will be seeing these in a future meeting to approve. But, but thank you very much for your time and have a great day. Take care. With that, I would like to go back to our regularly order of agenda, which is to go back to report discussion item A, COVID-19 district update. I, I, I'm aware that we are two and a half hours into this meeting. I think it's been a fruitful meeting so far. But I would like to make sure that we can cover as much of this as we can today without putting any off. So, Dr. Evans, I think you have a somewhat brief COVID-19 update. But obviously, whatever it takes, we are happy to hear.
Thank you. I do have a brief COVID-19 district update, although the school committee has been given, I think, a 50-page packet on our proposed pool testing. And that has been moving forward. So I wanted to give you a brief update on that and take any questions that you might have. So last night, we were matched with Beacon as our provider for pool testing. And I expect to meet in a day or two with Beacon. I'm waiting for a return from them to set the time with Jen Murphy, Jen Markham, our nurse leader. And perhaps some support from public health to begin to formulate the final pieces of the proposal. Some of it will depend on whether or not Beacon is able to provide additional support for us. Because as I mentioned previously, rolling out pool testing with existing personnel is very challenging for us, given that we're fairly slim on our staffing levels and our nurses in particular are already quite over. I'm not going to call it burdened, but are very busy with managing regular health issues, supporting contact tracing, following up on students who are ill, et cetera. So we'll have a report for you shortly after we have that meeting to look at what the aspects are of pool testing that we'll be able to support. As I mentioned at the last meeting, we're planning to roll it out one grade level at a time at the high school for the period of after the vacation for the next four weeks or five weeks. While the state is providing additional resources, as you have seen from the packet, at that point, we're completely on our own in terms of negotiating with a provider and, and looking to estimate costs. It's very difficult to estimate costs without knowing how the pool testing has worked for us and what we'll be able to negotiate with any other providers, if we'll be able to stay with Beacon or we'll need to move to someone else. I know that the select board has generously put aside some emergency funds potentially to support pool testing. And so if we need to tap into those, we'll be coming back to you into the select board for, for the recommendations as we work through this with public health. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, particularly about pool testing at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Sounds like you're still, still in the learning phase. So while, of course, questions are welcome, if they get too detailed, you may not just not know the answer at this point in time. So open up to questions or comments from the committee? Seeing none at this time, we're looking forward.
Just a quick one, Brian. Dr. Evans, so nothing has changed essentially from the, when we spoke last week. We were just getting paired with Beacon and then you'll have more information for. But the, I just want to be clear that the operations planning and everything is continuing. It's just that until we were matched with Beacon, we're sort of unable to answer questions until you meet with them. Is that, is that pretty much a good summary?
Right, the, some of the logistics are supported by Beacon and we have requested additional support from, through the DESE as we've completed our questionnaire about needs. So how this rolls out will be in some measure dependent on what support DESE or Beacon can provide to us. And so, and what we've learned as we go through doing sort of one grade level, the first week, then two, then three, then four. By the end, everyone at the high school staff and students will be participating on a voluntary basis, all those who wish to participate. And so we'll know a lot more after the initial week or two of rollout about what works for us. And that'll help us do some more longer term planning in terms of needs. But we couldn't really move ahead with some of the logistics around follow up testing or exactly how we were going to do that for a positive pool until we met with Beacon to see what additional resources they might be able to provide for that. And so none of the issues have changed. We're continuing to work on things like permission slips and notification to students and parents and staff and so forth. So there are lots and lots of logistics just in terms of, you know, what, what the devices look like that we use for collection and how do they need to get packed? And, you know, where do we send them and what are the communication procedures? Lots of logistics that we're expecting Beacon to support. Fortunately, this is an organization that has done this in other districts and so they have a good scope of experience upon which to draw. And public health has a favorable impression of them and so we were pleased to be matched with them. So we'll have more information for you probably early next week.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I would thank you for the update and thank you for getting us information when you have it available. And I would offer that if you need anything from the school committee, while we are not scheduled to meet again until potentially after this starts rolling out, we, I will volunteer our whole committee that we'd be willing to meet if you need any advice or suggestions from us as far as how to do this. However, at this point, we've, we've expressed our support. And most of it seems to be operational at this point unless you need to come back to us for anything before our next meeting.
I think we're in good shape. Point of order, Brian, if there's anything that we need to vote on to.
Likewise.
Support or if there is a plan that we need to support or anything like that.
If, if anything needs, it requires a vote, we will certainly have to meet to vote. Agreed. So thank you very much. With that, I'd like to move on to the next agenda item, which is the interim superintendent search update. And this will be a, a, a rather quick update. I want to remind the committee what I stated last week, which was that Ms. Bollinger is and Ms. Bergstrom have been tasked with leading interim superintendent screening committee. As I mentioned last week, we have the district leadership profile has been submitted and released to the public. We are, have a deadline of February 8th for responses. I would open it up to Ms. Bollinger's and Ms. Bergstrom if they have anything they want to add. Otherwise, we are still more or less in the same place, at least from my perspective, not as one of the members of that screening committee. I'm still at the same place I was a week ago, but Ms. Bollinger is, I will turn it over to you if you have anything you'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Vinalia. That is, that would be correct. We are still very much in a waiting period right now while the applications come in. And they, as you had indicated, are due back to us on February 8th, next Monday. And we've fully recognized that this waiting period can be very stressful to the community. But I just want to emphasize that we will continue to keep the community updated with information as we have more along the way. Ms. Bergstrom, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
Nope, that was, you and Mr. Vinalia did an excellent summary, I think. That's pretty much where we are. Does anyone have any questions for us? Looks like we're all set, Mr. Vinalia.
Thank you.
I was muted. I did it myself. Thank you very much. I appreciate your willingness to take on this endeavor and we'll have more information soon. And with that, we will move on to, we did the capital projects update. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. We had the update from select board, so we'll move to the fiscal year 22 draft budget update. And I believe that's, I'm not sure what page it's on, but I'm sure will be Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittamore. So, Dr. Evans.
Sure, this is a standing agenda item from now probably until the town meeting happens so that we can finalize our FY22 budget. What I've provided for the school committee or some financial analysis documents, particularly related to chapter 70, which is the state aid to schools that comes through the town. It is awarded to the town and is used to support school programs. And so as we were afraid would happen, the allocations for all districts in terms of enrollment related increases were very minimal because the state took the current enrollment as the basis for identifying the need for next fall. We all know that we should expect about a 5% increase, bounce back enrollment across the state. A little bit less here in Winchester, but a significant number of students, at least a couple of hundred students, we think, if we're able to be fully in person, as we expect to be, will be enrolled, particularly at the K1 level. This has an impact on our overall budget in terms of additional staffing needs and, and space needs. So across the Commonwealth, the average increase from, in chapter 70 was, you know, one or 2%. And that's disappointing. However, there are some other sources of revenue that will allow us to do some budget planning. And that includes some additional ESSER money, which is federal money, an additional kind of grant assessment that's not really a grant per se, but just a grant of monies, small amount to districts through the governor as, as allocated by the DESE. And I fully expect that we'll see additional allocations for public education from the federal government before the year is up. Some of these monies have a lot of restrictions on how you can spend them. Some need to be spent by this June, some need to be spent by a year from June. Some need to be spent by two years from June. So of, you know, really prudent planning process has to be used so that we can extend some of these resources into FY22 and FY23 where possible to allow us to do better budget planning in those years. I think you heard from the select board chair that it's likely that we're going to need another operating override in the next year or two. Some of that will be dependent on our overall enrollment and, and school needs as the school budget is the single biggest piece of the pie in terms of Winchester's need to fund public education and town needs. And so Ellen Whittamore and I have been working to look at all of our sources of funding, including fee-based revenue, which the school committee will take up at some future meeting. Money remaining in some of our evolving accounts, some of which will have to be used to offset losses this year, particularly for food service and or possibly transportation. And, and other remaining sources of grant funding, some grants that can be extended for an additional year, federal grants in particular. So lots of pieces to this puzzle. When we met with the town manager and some representatives in the finance committee recently, the town manager identified a gap of a few hundred thousand dollars between what she perceived as available resources and what was needed on the town and school side. There's always a little bit of give and take as we narrow our estimates and we look at both revenue and expense projections. For this week, what I am focusing on is a closer look at potential enrollment, particularly K to eight and, and especially K1. You might remember that for the K to five pool of teachers, we added an additional three positions as sort of a hold for potentially some bounce back section. So we'll look very closely at that to see whether we can pull back on one or more of those based on the names that we currently have of students eligible from the census or who are siblings of current students. We do expect some projects to start to come online in terms of building projects in the next school year. What impact that will have on class size and on enrollment is to be determined. We have not added any additional enrollment related positions at the middle or high school. We're still retaining our request for the dean of students and the additional social emotional counselor. And so what the school committee needs to continue to review is what are the overall town needs? What's the town's capacity to fund those and what's the sense of urgency for the additional positions that we've added? So you can expect that Ellen and I will come back in the next, at the next meeting in February with some suggested, you know, revisions to the original school committee voted draft budget based on our understanding of what our needs will be. And that is very typical in every year, pretty important in a pandemic year as well, particularly with additional sources of funding that have lots of strings and restrictions on how you can use them. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Ellen, is there anything before we turn it over to questions that I should have said but didn't around our discussions on FY22 budget development?
No, I think that, especially with the additional grant money that we will be getting and then trying to retain as much revenue from grants in our revolving accounts to be used in the next fiscal years is something that we need to take a really hard look at to do some planning for our years.
Thank you both, and I would happily take questions or comments on really budget, anything FY22 budget, either the governor's numbers, anything that we've got in our packet. Mr. Nixon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's a request to Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittamore. The, some of the information you shared with us seems more or less impactful to Winchester. So for instance, there's a document that says education grants and other programs, that's Governor's House One versus FY21. I know some of this comes directly from MASSS, but that includes some predictions around programs like military mitigation, Metco, rural school assistance, and some things that just don't apply to Winchester. And I gather this is information that was really sort of hot off the press. So I have a request since, and I think you're quite right, this is going to be kind of a standing agenda item as we move forward through, you know, towards Springtown meeting. It would be helpful to me, and I, I would assume to the rest of the committee, if you could maybe highlight some of the specific lines or pieces and parts of that information that you think are particularly relevant to Winchester. The ones that I mentioned are easy for me to pick out because I know they don't apply. There may be some things in there that do apply to us that are just not readily apparent to me. So that would be very helpful. And then I would also share, I know I, in the chair, received a memo from Ms. Whittamore, I think, yesterday with some follow up information regarding transportation costs. I think that's interesting information. I would ask that that be shared with the committee so that we can then discuss. so that we can then discuss the transportation line. Not now, but at our next school committee meeting, since that composes an important part of our budget. And I have some, some outstanding questions about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. I assume both of those are things that thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Bergstrom?
I just have a similar request, I guess, for future budget discussions as well. When I saw the governor's approved budget for education come out and I saw that we actually had an increase in chapter 70, I, I was actually a glass half-full kind of person because I fully expected that to be level funded or a decrease in funding for Winchester next year. So while we did not get the increase that we were looking for, I'd also just like to remind our committee that we should be pleased that we are seeing a little bit of increase at all, particularly as other members of this committee have pointed out that this is an extraordinarily difficult economic time, not just for Winchester, but for the state. I realize it constrains our own budgets and what we're looking at, but I just want to say that I was, I was happy to see that at all. I noticed that the SOA, it appears they're funding at 1/7. Is that correct, Dr. Evans? Am I reading that correctly in the document that you sent us? So also for future discussions, I'd like to understand what that amount actually means for Winchester. And you had also referred to some of the COVID grants are limited in what we can spend them on. I believe the SOA funds are limited to what we put forth in our SOA plan as to what they, what budget lines that they could fall under. So I guess is, again, like Mr. Nixon, just for future conversations, I'd like more clarity around some of those numbers and understanding how they can be spent while we think about our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Additional questions or comments from the committee?
I would just say, I agree that the information on the different line items would be very helpful, particularly to what is pertaining, what pertains to us.
Thank you, Ms. Bolina. Ms. Marchand, yes, no question? Nope, sorry. I thought I saw you raise your hand. No. So, thank you very much. I have no additional questions. So this is all very helpful and I look forward to continuing budget development and learning more. So, thank you so much for the update. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a discussion item on the draft job description for the operations coordinator. And that would go to Ms. Kirby, I believe, is going to present on that, if you are ready to do so.
I think that that's not my role right now. Sorry.
My apologies. Has you listed a staff available? I'll turn it back over to Dr. Evans.
Thank you. So as you might imagine, coming up with a job description for someone to support operations entails more than just sort of pulling the operations piece off the director of finance and operations, but really focusing on the things that are most important to support operations. And I just want to remind the committee about where this job description originated and where the need for this position originated. And it has become crystal clear to me as part of the pandemic response and what that is required from the business office, in particular from Ellen Whittamore, Director of Operations and Finance, but also superintendent and everyone else in central office who's tried to pick up pieces of this. As I've said before, you know, one of the things when you're doing transition planning, moving to an interim superintendent and then a new superintendent is depending on the strengths and proclivities of the incoming leadership, they can bring strengths that help support operations and finance or not. And we have to look ahead to what the next year is likely to bring in terms of operations and finance. The other thing I think that has become clear in the last couple of years on the finance side has been how lean our staff is in that area. We have really just two people to support business office functions and then a part-time person. And illnesses or absences in those positions have meant that for long extended time periods, Ellen Whittamore has had to pick up things like payroll or accounts payable or transportation and food service, just very sort of granular, day-to-day responsibilities in those areas. I foresee in the coming year and years, a bigger need for deeper analysis on some finance issues, support for the building project, support for Laurie's functions in HR as we go into negotiating what will be six new contracts in the hundreds of hours that are required to attend not only the negotiations, but to prepare the financial analysis. And so, pretty clear to me that this position really requires the director of operations and finance position and the business office in particular, requires another person to assist with what I'm going to call logistics, but it's really operations. And if you can take a look at the job description, it really calls for somebody who has excellent organization, communication, customer service and technology and computer skills, who can act as a liaison with the Department of Public Works. Right now, Ellen and I, particularly Ellen, interact with the DPW every day, multiple times a day, because there's a lot of work in managing our seven schools and partners around ongoing facilities issues, day-to-day issues related to heat at this point, or HVAC, or pandemic issues. And it's an immense amount of work, both on the DPW side and on our side, that I expect to continue into the fall as even as we continue some of the mitigation efforts. I think the other piece is that it's easy to underestimate how much support is needed for transportation, food service, and other sort of capital projects and facilities projects. Every decision in relation to those takes a lot of work and we have very little support for those positions. We have one person who supports a little bit of accounts payable, building rental and food service. Building rental alone in many districts is a full-time position. And so we want to be sure that all the coordination happens and that the director of operations and finance position has enough time to do the finance piece of this job. And so that's why I've proposed this additional new position. And what I would say to you with frankness is that if we do not add additional resources to central office, I think we're going to lose great people in the central office because people just can't sustain the level of commitment that that is required to do a good job with this. The last year has been extraordinarily difficult, made more difficult by some personnel leaves that folks had to take in the business office. And without additional support, I think, I think we're really putting ourselves in a bad position. So I would advocate extremely strongly for the addition of this position. I won't be here to see it necessarily put into place, but I'd like to acknowledge the need for it.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Again, my apologies on going to second. Just went by the hand, by the packet. Are there questions or comments on this? Mr. Nixon has raised his hand. Mr. Nixon.
Thank you. If it's okay, I will, I was going to try to share a screen just so you can sort of see it as we go. This isn't working very well for me. So may, I'll try, let me, let me try this. I wanted to blow it up there just a little bit. Okay, let me try that one more time. So, Dr. Evans, I thank you for this, because I feel like I've been, I'm the one who keeps asking, you know, so, so what is it really? What does it look like? And as I read through this, what this feels like to me is a really detailed description of, of, of need. It's like, these are the things we need help with. So it's the food service and it's the facilities piece and it's transportation. And as I, as I, I guess I have questioned in previous meetings, some of these areas of focus are kind of in very separate wheelhouses. I think of like, especially the facilities piece, very different animal than maybe how one runs transportation or food service in a district. And so, as I was looking through this and looking at all the skill sets, just as we've earlier had conversations around, you know, our challenges around filling the tech director position, given what we're looking for in our resources. I wondered, I mean, these are some, these are some pretty stringent qualifications in terms of education and licensure and so forth. I just wonder, is such a person out there? And are they really gonna, are they gonna work for us for $90,000? And I'm going to be clumsy in how I sort of say this. If, if there were, if there was a support position who could, let's say, crush it in managing or helping to supervise and manage like food service and transportation, just those two things as an example, which would then free up other staff to focus on things like building projects. Would that be a satisfactory result, not knowing who we're going to get in the way of applicants? And then I might argue the inverse. The inverse question might play, which is if there were, given not only just the Lynch project coming online, but think about how long that capital report was and all the building project stuff that's going on. If we found someone who who not only had experience working in public school districts, but in particular working on construction projects, renovation projects, who understands AIA documents and DHCD and central register requirements, you know, almost sort of like a Winchester Public Schools version of a Meg White, who's just, you know, amazing and her, and she juggles so much. If we had that kind of support on staff, that would then free up our current personnel to focus on things like transportation and food service, would that be viable? So I think this is a really helpful document because it just kind of describes all the things we could really use help with. If, if it would be your recommendation, we move forward with a job description, much like what you've presented us today, then I would just make the observation that I think there seems to be a lot of overlap with the current Director of Finance and Operations sort of job description. And so I would wonder, for instance, if, if we were to assign to this individual, you know, be the liaison for construction projects and prepare the capital planning requests. I would, I'd like, I'd like you to think about, are there maybe some essential tasks for the Director of Finance and Operations that maybe we should discuss? In other words, does this warrant revisiting what the job description is for the Director of Finance and Operations? Who would, who would, it's clear from what you've presented to us, would sort of be supervising this person, right? So I'm in the unique position, since I'm our capital liaison, but you know, every year I sit at a table with you and with Ms. Whittamore and Mr. Lawson, and we talk about the capital needs and we put together some information, we bring it to the school committee. And so then I was, I was looking at the job description. I'm curious to know, would, would this sort of be a new person at the table and it's a bigger group? That's still doing the same thing? Or with, with respect to this particular issue, would this be someone who would be doing it in place of someone who's been helping us all these years with that task, to free up the Director of Finance and Operations to do other things? So I suppose that's where I am with this, is I, I feel like it's a tremendously broad skill set. Maybe number one, to find that person with the kind of experience that we're looking for and, and or number two, to find it who's willing to work for the budgeted amount that you've proposed. And, and does it make sense to have a conversation about breaking that down a little bit? That was sort of part one. Part two is can we not have a conversation about how this then affects the job description of the Director of Finance and Operations, who right now seems to be doing a lot of this, which is kind of, I guess, central to the issue, right? It's more than a full-time job. So how can they, how do they relate to one another? How should they relate to one another? Thanks.
So, I'll take a stab at this and then Ellen can jump in. So, before Ellen came on board, was it four years ago now? The previous Director of Operations and Finance made it clear when he left to work in a position in another district that was just a finance position, that, that this was untenable to expect one person to effectively address both finance and operations. The thing about operations, I think that is, that is sometimes very time-consuming, is that every day you get up and you have to make sure the lights are on, the heat's on, everything's working, and then respond to several hours' worth of unexpected, unplanned kind of operations issues. And there's a lot of overlap in operations between, say, food service and facilities. Because a lot of the issues with food service are actually facilities issues, right? You've got a sink that's clogged or you've got additional need for, you know, some, something in relation to a serving station, or you've got dictates that come from the state in relation to nutrition or that, that have an impact on facilities. So, and some of the functions here, once you have them in operation, only require moderate amounts of response and time, like transportation. So there's a big push when you're planning the routes. It's a major part of the summer work. But once the routes are in operation, once the bus passes have been issued and you've collected the fees, it kind of is on, a little bit on the daily sort of questions that come in, sometimes have to be handled by the Director of Operations and Finance. Parents unhappy with a bus route, child behavior on the bus, et cetera. But in general, there are pieces of this job that are kind of seasonal, that are, that are busy at a certain time. Similarly, if you're putting out a new bus contract or a new food service contract, there's a lot of work associated with that, looking at the bids, reviewing them, et cetera. That sort of straddles that operations finance line. So the reason this is kind of broad is that this is the operations half of a typical business manager's job. And there are folks out there who would like to get experience on the operations side, who would then potentially become business managers. They're either already certified as business managers through the organization that Ellen belongs to, Masbo, that trains people in this. And so there are sort of entry-level folks who are smart and well-organized, who would be willing to do this kind of a job as an entry level and stick with it for a little bit. But I really do see this as primarily a facilities and operation, daily operations job, to free up time for the Director of Finance and Operations to put more time into the finance piece. If all we're doing every day is, is sort of responding to immediate unknown tasks, then none of us can kind of give the, the proper time to planning ahead on the finance side. We're not taking advantage of this position at all. So the previous person who held this job pretty much recognized that it's undoable to try to do both parts of this well. And the alternative to asking for an operations support person is to ask for a finance support person. We could use the same amount of funding and hire part-time budget manager who could help with some of the finance procurement, et cetera, stuff. But I think that the district, particularly with several aging buildings, is, is better served to provide support for operations right now. And that's why I've asked for this. So Ellen, what have I forgotten to say? So I think, I think Mr. Nixon asks a good question. Is this too broad? I'd rather, you know, really what we're looking for is the person. We want somebody who is organized, understands facilities and understands how to interact with the DPW and the food service folks and the transportation folks to help us troubleshoot and think ahead and do a good job on operations. And it's not a job that requires a lot of experience in any one area. So Ellen, you want to jump in?
I think you articulated all the areas very well. I think that the, the, the facilities piece is, is, I, I think, really where there is a strong need, I mean, in all of the pieces, because there is so much overlap between food service and facilities. But the facilities piece is the most important and the key piece, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you both. Ms. Marchand?
Thank you, Brian. As the EFPBC member, I can, sorry, I can attest to how much work Ellen does in the day-to-day part of the new construction additions, like the walking around with Meg White. There's a lot of day-to-day things that she has to juggle around just simply the building perspective of it. And all this new construction, all of these projects we're talking about are going to take even more of her time. On the other side of this, we have a the potential of who knows how the economy's gonna move forward. We don't know how our budgets are going to move forward, how they're going to be impacted for the next three, four, five years because of the pandemic and the industry that's changed, I'm sorry, and the government management that could potentially Um, and the industry that's changed, I'm sorry, and the government, um, management that could potentially change on the state, federal, all of that. There is so much happening in this world that can impact our public schools immensely. It could change the way we're doing things, it could change our funding structures, there's a lot of unknowns. And so I really respect the perspective and experience and expertise that Dr. Evans and, and Ellen bring to this. And so, um, leaving the, the, the details of what this person will be able to do, I think we need to fully, um, and wholeheartedly support this position because it's clear how much is getting done on the backs of one or two or three people. And so I, I'm, I'm fully in support of this. I hear, I'm sorry to say, the desperation in the, the, the request. Um, and, and now we're piling on even more, just given the aging infrastructure and, and who knows what else is gonna happen. I feel like that unknown that the pandemic is causing is creating these critical opportunities right now that will give us the flexibility to respond to facilities needs, to budget needs, and so having someone really focused on the finance piece is so crucial for our very strong public school system in Winchester.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. Additional questions or comments on the draft job description? Mr. Nixon?
So, so just one other thought, and that is, um, if, we throw out a hypothetical, if it's really important, no one in administration has told me this, but for instance, on the facility side, if we said it was really important that we had somebody in this role who knows how to read architectural and engineering drawings, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, knows how to read specifications, so that, so that they're able to either answer questions in the field, or maybe come up with, help come up with creative solutions. We would want to articulate that, so that, that sort of speaks to a skill set as opposed to, you know, experience. Cause people can sit in in meetings and they hear issues that come up, but maybe they don't have like the expertise. And if I put it back on myself, yeah, I have areas of expertise in design and construction, but I couldn't begin to tell you. I mean, I have to literally crack open the book to see, remind myself, like, what are the laws and regulations around busing, right, in a district? I rely on Dr. Evans and on Ms. Whittamore to know what the requirements are around busing. Uh, I know what a bus looks like, I know how many wheels they roll on, I know where our schools are. But I don't feel like, just because I know how buildings are put together, that I necessarily have, that doesn't translate to make me an expert on how to like, develop a bus contract, for instance, and the same thing is true about food service, even though I have three meals a day. So I, my, my only word of caution is, I, I, again, I go back to how this job description looks. I, I think it sort of articulates a real need that's there, cause we could really benefit from support in all of those areas. I think it would be helpful if we could be maybe a little more specific about, you know, what can this person do? Are there specific skill sets? And, and by the way, I'm not suggesting they have to be able to read architectural and engineering drawings, unless that's something that Ms. Whittamore and Dr. Evans say, yes, you know, we would want them to be able to do that. So, um, yeah, so I guess that, that's my thought, is I would, I would hope we could be really just maybe a little more specific and careful, and maybe it's driven by like, where the emphasis should be, where the greatest need is, um, in terms of support, and maybe it's not on the building side, maybe it is around transportation and food service. I think that that would be, I think that would be helpful, and again, I think if it stays this broad, I think it would be helpful also to have a conversation about the, the current job description for Director of Finance and Operations, because there's obviously a, an important relationship between the two.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon, uh, Ms. Bergstrom.
Um, so I just wanted to, um, uh, offer support for a little bit more understanding around this as Mr. Nixon is articulating. And I think perhaps what could help us all is, it feels like we're splitting one job into two, or we are having a director and then somebody to support them. And I think, um, the missing piece for me is understanding how that's gonna change Ms. Whittamore's job description as well. So, um, maybe perhaps if we could see both job descriptions side by side, that might offer a little more clarity for the committee in terms of how the structure of the leadership team going forward is going to work together and to sort of clarify whose responsibilities are whose.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom.
If I could just speak to this, so since two people have expressed kind of the same desire to understand, uh, how does this relate to the position of the Director of Operations and Finance? Nothing comes off the plate for the Director of Operations and Finance in terms of responsibilities. This is really, you could call this an assistant business manager position. Um, but it's really, uh, to have the capacity to have someone troubleshoot. So if we, um, much like, uh, Chris Conway does at the high school for issues related to facilities for DPW, this is a position where Ellen or I, and this, and it's meant to be, um, a standalone position that stays whether Ellen and I are here or not, that it's a, that it's a support position for the Director of Operations and Finance. It's not a director-level position, it's a subordinate position where the Director of Operations and Finance would be able to say, um, last night was a really icy night, can you drive around to all the schools and make sure all the pathways look clear? Which is what Ellen does now when it's bad weather. Or, um, the food service director and the, you know, the, the regional managers coming out to meet with the food service director. Can you just go and have a meeting with those folks and see what their issues are? And see if you can troubleshoot around these three things that need, we need to have, um, to, to work on. Or someone who can go and meet with the, I mean, I think, um, even though our transportation is limited, you, you know, even just as, um, uh, uh, specific as when there is a snow in, in the forecast, or if, if there is a part of town where the street might be closed, to have, to have, be able to say to that person, can you interact with the bus company to give them a heads up that the street is gonna be closed? So sort of that, uh, ability to delegate some of these responsibilities. The responsibilities, and it's not just me, or just Ellen, or Lori, or Pam, or Jen. The things that we're doing as central office administrators, that we don't have the capacity to delegate to others, is, if people knew, pretty astonishing to have to get as, you know, when there's a snow day, I have to post at all of the television stations, you know, uh, what the status is of it. Um, I need to send out the school messenger notice every day about COVID, um, related, uh, cases, et cetera. I mean, I think there are things that are just, um, if we had additional support, we'd be able to delegate some of these things. So you're, you're looking beyond just a sort of clerical position to someone who can take some initiative and troubleshoot among the many, many facilities or transportation or food service issues that come across our plates. So we wanted to keep the description fairly broad, but all of those responsibilities ultimately still fall under the Director of Operations and Finance. This is an assistant to the Director of Operations and Finance, be able to delegate some of the operations piece, that's all. Not so much the finance piece. So I hope that makes it clear.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Um, Ms. Marshant?
Uh, just a follow-up, is there, is this a title? I'm, I'm not clear on where the confusion's coming from, cause to me it seems pretty obvious that a director is of course gonna stay in, doing everything that she does, whereas a coordinator is literally physically moving around and doing the things that are coming from the policy down. Um, is this operations coordinator title something common in school districts? The title itself is that?
So in, in, uh, and Ellen can speak to this as well, eh, from her experience. In a district our size, there's often an assistant business manager who helps with operations and finance. There's also, in addition to that, usually a budget manager who does a lot of the finance stuff. So for example, you know, the finance committee has asked Ellen this week for four or five different spreadsheets with information. It would have been helpful that, if she could have someone else do some of those for her, um, for, you know, to respond to that request. Um, and so we are just leanly staffed, you know, when you think about, I could make a case for HR. In HR, we have Lori Kirby and one secretary, that is it, for seven hundred odd employees over the course of the year. I mean, I think, uh, you know, we have one person doing payroll, we have one person doing accounts payable. I mean, I just think we have been so leanly staffed for so long, that all of us have had to be, become jack-of-all-trades. But in this case, it's just not sustainable, and I can't leave the district in good conscience. Not advocating for an additional central office administrator, but I could add, I could add a professional development coordinator who works for Jen. I could add another HR person who helps support, um, human capital investments and outreach and diversity hiring and so forth. I mean, every area of our operations is understaffed compared to similarly performing districts of our size. Ellen, have you seen operations directors in other districts or assistant business managers, or can you speak to that?
So, um, assistant directors of finance and operations or assistant business managers are very common, um, as are grants managers and, um, and budget analysts and budget directors.
I, can I just add as a follow-up? I recently attended an MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, um, webinar they had on, um, budgeting. And I, I believe it's the Framingham Director. And the, the amount of finance-related documentation he was able to produce to explain to the public what and where the money is going to. It was fascinating and such, it provided such clarity that I think that Ellen would have the opportunity to create some of these documents that we desperately need in our budget book. I mean, we, we, we talk about it in very clear terms, but I think if, if we give her the opportunity to create some of that documentation and to think around the financial picture of the district, we would be in, in a much easier position when we go and ask for all those overrides we're asking for. And I think she'll be able to support those roles in a more savvy, technical way, too. It, it, there's a lot of legwork that has to happen around those overrides. And having Ellen's time freed up to help support that, as a non-future school committee member, I think that's gonna be a wonderful opportunity for that to be part of the dialogue with the taxpayers. And so, again, I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. I would just like to state that I, I have said in the past, and I'll say again, I, I totally support this position. I think it's, um, essential. I, I, I actually said when it was first proposed, I'd like to hire it now, if we could. But obviously, that's getting ourselves before where we should be, without any certainty that we could continue funding into the next fiscal year. That wouldn't necessarily be prudent. But, uh, if I could wave my magic wand, I certainly would have this position appear, uh, on our shores today. Um, so I support this position, um, uh, and I would like to see, for all these reasons, I don't, uh, I'm worried that we won't be able to keep some of our staff, especially in a year where we're looking to have an interim superintendent, and a following year we're gonna have a, a new superintendent. I think that we need to have as much support as possible moving on, uh, during this time period. Um, but I respect, uh, all the questions that are being asked, I think they're good questions to understand. We wanna understand what we're proposing and what we're funding. So, um, I am in support of this position, um, as described, and I would presume as, uh, as sort of answered by a question from Mr. Nixon, that you're looking for the right person. And these, uh, it, these are my words, these are some of the skill sets you'd like them to have. And if you got the right person who had this set of skill sets, that might be who you'd get, and they would help in this area. If you got a person whose skill sets were this way, that would be the person you'd get, and they'd help in that direction. So, no, I appreciate that, and I think better to have all of those skill sets there, because someone will apply saying, well, I know how to do A, B, and C, but don't know how to do X, Y, and Z. I'm still gonna apply, because that may be the, and we want that person to apply, so, um, I'm in support of this position. So, um, Mr. Nixon, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you. Um, so I, I actually, I'm really glad that Ms. Marshant, um, made the points that she did. I was actually gonna try to piggyback on that and suggest, and I'm gonna try to share it here. There, some of these bullets under essential duties and responsibilities are ones that if, um, and I, and I try to keep referring to title, not people, but you know, I worked with Ellen now for almost five years, and so there are things that I know she would, she, she, she does and would continue to do very, very well, and with, you know, professionalism and discretion. So when I see like the third bullet, and I wanted to just clarify this, it says collaborate with the school resources office. Does that, should that be school resource officer? Ellen's on mute.
Uh, yes, yes, it should be school resource officer.
It could be officer or officers, like the town actually has two positions in the budget.
Sure. So, so, um, this and some other things kind of jumped out at me because, um, some of, some of things are like annual tasks, like prepare capital planning requests. There's not much, and I'll say in air quotes, sort of sensitive about that, we have a lot of buildings, we have a lot of needs. Um, our school resource officers deal with some pretty sensitive stuff, um, where there's some privacy and discretion um, called for, you know, with students and families. And I have great confidence that, you know, the team that we have today engages with them, you know, appropriately. And so when I saw the third bullet, I, I thought, well, so what might that, what might that be? Because that's something I might personally feel more comfortable with Ms. Whittamore doing. Um, but as we were saying, it, it, to some degree, maybe it depends on who you get. But I would again, just put in a request that, um, I'd like to see the job description we have for the, the, the current job description we have for the Director of Operations and Finance. And then, because I think it could help, I think the way to have the conversation and really build the case for this even further and sort of clarify the need, is the very thing that Ms. Marshant was just speaking to, which is, if there are tasks that are, the current Director of Operations and Finance is having to deal with, and, and means that we're not maybe more fully utilizing her time for greater effect on things of more, I'll say, importance. That may not be the right way to say it. Um, I think that's the way to have it, right? It, so how, how can there be a broader understanding? It's not just about, well, there's so much work, so we need to hire someone else to sort of share in the work, which is to some degree what it is. I think there's a, maybe a bigger point to be made, which is, it allows us to sort of prioritize who's doing what. And if we can greater leverage, for instance, Ms. Whittamore's skill sets on things that are gonna have bigger impact, whether it's on the school committee for budget and planning discussions, or bigger things that are important on operations for the district, I think that that would be really helpful. So another maybe less clumsy way to say it is, if, if we were to find someone who can accomplish some of these essential duties and responsibilities, what is the consequence of that? With respect to the Director of Operations and Finance today, what are the things that she will be able to do more or even better? It, in other words, they're both important. Um, so I, I'm glad Ms. Marshant said what she did, because I guess that, that's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to get at. We're, we're not just saying we have more work, so we need more people, there's some thoughtfulness about who's really going to be doing what, so that they're better able to focus and, and do a better job on it.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon, um, Ms. Marshant. And then I, I wanna be mindful also that it's almost one o'clock, uh, not to you, not to you specifically, I'm talking to the committee as a whole. No, um, just I wanna keep in mind people what time it is, um, Ms. Marshant, it really wasn't to you, sorry.
I'm, I'm teasing you, no. Um, my question is about, um, process, why was this brought in as a report rather than a, a, a voting action item? I'm confused, so you've reported it to us, now what?
So I put it forward as a, as a discussion item, because every new job description gets discussion and then thought, and then feedback. And then we come back with the final version for you to vote on. So the next meeting would be a vote on the components of this. I, I, I would say, I think it's, it's important for you to see the current job description of the Director of Operations and Finance. Um, although I would submit that, you know, a lot of what both Ellen and I do together goes far beyond the scope of that job description. Um, and some of it is just very granular stuff, you know, the, uh, interacting, a lot of what Ellen does in interacting with the school resource officer, for example, is, um, the police department will say, kids are climbing on the roof at V O, we need a fence put up here. Or kids are drinking behind parkers, we need a light installed here, or we need a, we need to upgrade our, um, uh, pass swipe, uh, door access system at this school, et cetera. And so to be able to have someone else problem-solve around some of those would free the Director of Operations and Finance to do more finance, that's just it. So, um, but pieces of this are things that I do as superintendent, and pieces of this are things that Ellen does, and pieces of this are things that Jen and Lori do. And so a lot of these responsibilities naturally gets spread across all of the people who are available to do the things. And so, um, I can come with a little bit more granular job description, um, um, I can come with a little bit more granular job description. Um, that's a little more specific around some of the job functions. Um, but I, we hoped to keep this fairly general to try to find the right person and not so much focus on, you know, excluding people. Um, and it is in the FY twenty-two budget now as a placeholder, um, for a salary for this position. So you can, over the next few months, approve or disapprove a job description, uh, leave it in the budget, advocate for it, or take it out as a school committee, though that, you know, that's, that's, that's the school committee's responsibility. So what we need to do is, this is a new position. We're not advocating for a lot of new positions we haven't asked for before. Um, but it just seems so clear to me that this is a necessity, and so that's why I put it forward as part of the budget.
May I make a request? Um, it sounds like, I, I'm sorry, we haven't heard from Karen, but it sounds like Chris and, and Michelle have some questions that maybe if they would be comfortable reaching out to you and getting some of the nuances worked out. Um, but it really, uh, in my opinion, I think that in the next agenda, it should come up for a vote, um, for approval, if that's okay with the committee. I really think, um, that that would be something I would be comfortable with, because I'm comfortable with it as is. So I wouldn't want to delay it if Chris and Michelle are, are comfortable reaching out and having this one-on-one conversation to move this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Marshant. Uh, Ms. Bergstrom.
Can I draw a quick equivalency, Dr. Evans, and see if this resonates with you? Um, so are you saying that this position, um, while the two job descriptions are vastly different, is necessary in the way that the dean of students is necessary? That it's going to allow the staff that we have that's hired at a particular level with a particular level of expertise to do their job extraordinarily well instead of being spread so thin all the time? And to be able to, um, hand over parts of the job that, um, there may be somebody even, you know, better suited to do day-to-day operations to keep those, um, contacts in, um, with each other and, um, to then allow Ellen to use her expertise in finance and sort of managing and organizing operations the way we need to allow our principals and assistant principals at the high school to focus on, um, curriculum and instruction and working with staff. And, um, the, the same way, we need that dean of students to work directly with students.
No, absolutely. I think, I think you're hitting it head-on. It is, um, designed to make us more effective and efficient as a district, so that we can put our efforts into the best use of time to support continued improvements in the district.
Thank you, everybody so much. Um, I presume that we'll have this as an action item at our next meeting. If the committee at that time is ready to vote on it, um, so be it. If the committee isn't, then it'll be an action item, but we will only serve as a discussion at that point if there are additional edits that, that are requested. Um, but we will have the ability to vote on it at our next meeting, should we so decide to do so. Um.
Can I, can I just make a, a, a clarification, point of information? So I thi- I thought I heard Dr. Evans agree. It could be helpful to see the job description for the current Director of Operations and Finance. Could that, could that just be shared with the committee? Just from the superintendent as she, as she does, may, maybe even if it goes in the packet for the next school committee meeting. I think it'd be helpful context for us.
I see Dr. Evans writing down, so I presume she will do one or the other, and, uh, that will address your question.
Sure.
Um, with that, I would like to thank you very much. Uh, move on to the, um, action items. We have vote to approve minutes. We have three sets of minutes. Um, I assume you all had some chance to review them. Uh, I would, uh, accept any questions or comments or a motion to approve one or all of them if you are ready to do so.
I just had one edit, uh, that I wanted to suggest on the second set, which was December fifteenth. Um, top of page three, it says, Mr. Nixon shared concerns about not having spectators during hockey games, including gathering outside during the game without precautions. So I, I did use hockey as an example. My concern was about winter sports, not having spectators. But I would just ask that that be changed to, Mr. Nixon shared concerns about not having spectators during winter sports.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other, uh, thoughts, corrections, modifications? I would welcome a motion to approve as amended by Mr. Nixon.
So moved.
Second.
I would like a roll call vote. Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, votes unanimous. Thank you, uh, Ms. Canavan, and thank you, all of you. Um, which brings us to the chair report. Um, I have two, uh, things I would like to bring up. The first is that we have scheduled office hours for tomorrow night at seven PM. Uh, I know that two members of the committee have, may have some difficulty, myself included, um, attending those office hours. So I'd like to ask if anybody is available and interested. There's no requirement. But if you are available and interested to attend office hours tomorrow night at seven PM, if you would, um, you don't need to let me know now, although I would welcome that. But if you would let me know, um, in time, if we are unable to staff them, I am uncomfortable holding office hours with only one member of the committee. So if we can't get two members to attend, um, in one way or another, then we may have to postpone or cancel office hours this month. So if you could get back to me, um, before the end of business today, if you're interested. Um, and if I don't hear back, I will make an executive decision on how to move forward with that. So that's the first issue. And the second is that we have need of a policy subcommittee meeting at some point in the coming weeks, um, to look at, uh, handbook policy review and curriculum policy review. So that will be, um, scheduled at some point. Currently, um, both I and Ms. Bergstrom are the members of the policy subcommittee. So, uh, we will, uh, have those meeting, that meeting at some point, and that would be then reported back to the committee. Um, and so that's all I have as far as report. Um, Ms. Marshant?
Uh, Brian, i- if you could clarify, are we allowed as other members to submit, um, suggested policies to the policy subcommittee? Is that?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Um, and in fact, let me just, um, craft. If you, we will probably schedule this meeting and then, and the, um, and it will have to be posted with the topics. If you have something that you want the policy subcommittee to be looking at, um, I would, uh, ask that you reach out to me. And, um, because you can't reach out to the whole committee, but if you, Ms. Bergstrom and myself, um, and then we will see how that fits in and, um, uh, potentially be able to schedule it for our next meeting and potentially not depending on the scope. So that is all I have for chair report. Um, Dr. Evans, I will turn it over to you.
Uh, I have nothing further.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. Um, I appreciate the brevity. Um, uh, we have future agenda items. We are expecting an update on the mascot logo. Um, we have handbooks coming, which is the timeliness of the policy subcommittee meeting. School choice participation. Uh, Dr. Evans, could you remind me when we need to, um, uh, vote for school choice participation?
Uh, we have to vote, we have to vote by May, but I, um, uh, certainly i- nothing's changed from previous years where we are completely out of space. So our options in terms of accepting school choice are fairly limited, but we still have to have a public hearing. So sometime probably in April, we'll do that.
Perfect. So we would want to make sure, I, you have public hearing requires a month's notification and newspapers and various things. So we want to make sure they get it on the, the agenda.
Um, of information to clarify, I did, I heard April, so that, tha- this would actually fall on the next school committee, right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we could do it in March if, uh, at the, if it's the will of the committee.
So I, I raised the point, because if it's something that's going to happen in April, I would want to be sure that we're taking time to, you know, educate the new members of the school committee about what the issues are and what our practice has been. Um, so that it's an informed discussion and decision. And then alternatively, if that's not maybe what administration recommends, and it's something we want to do before the March election, that'd be a little bit out of practice, but not wildly early. Um, we just want to be sure we have it on our plate. And again, be clear about why we're doing it.
Uh, I, my recommendation, um, would be, um, and this is not because I don't want to do work, but I would recommend that we do it after the election, because we have a lot on our plates between now and then. Um, and I think adding a public hearing is just one more thing. But, uh, I certainly appreciate that, and I will defer to Dr. Evans to make sure that we get that in, in a timely manner, as she always does. Um, we have a discussion of fees coming up. Um, and that, um, I think will be important to follow up with, um, the request as far as issues on busing, um, because they go hand in hand. Um, and then lastly, I've been alerted that WIFI has a grant, so I want to make sure that's on our, um, that they would like us to consider at our next meeting. So I want to make sure that, that we don't somehow miss that. Because WIFI has been a great partner, and we do not want to pass up an opportunity to receive funds from our, our great partner. Um, uh, we will of course have the standard agenda items of COVID, uh, response and, uh, interim superintendent, uh, search. Its next meeting dates are February twenty-third. That is, um, a little later, because we have the vacation, March second and March sixteenth. Um, I believe it's one oh five, and I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Marshant?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollniers?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. Um, have a great day. Enjoy the shoveling. I saw the people across the street took about three hours to shovel by hand. So, uh, we got our work cut out. Bye.
Have a good day.